Well, that would work.
Yeah, I believe we're ready to go, so I'm going to begin. Good evening. As Chair of the Extra Planning Board, I am declaring that an emergency exists and that I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91-A colon 2 comma 3 colon Francis B. Francis. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with our determination, I also find that this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to the public's safety and confidence during the emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also would like to welcome members of the public assessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. So I would like to open the meeting of the Extra Planning Board of June 11th, 19, excuse me, 2020, and at this time, start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, also please state whether you're alone in the room or if there was someone else with you. So I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board, and I'm alone this evening. Nancy?
Nancy Belanger, and I am alone in the room.
Jen?
Jennifer Martel, and I am here currently with my six-year-old, who will be going to bed soon.
Okay. Gwen English?
Gwen English, and I am alone in the room at the moment.
Molly Cohen?
Hi, Molly Cohen, Select Board Rep. I am currently alone as well.
Peter Steckler?
Hi, this is Pete Steckler. I am currently alone.
Okay. Aaron Brown?
Aaron Brown, alone.
Pete Cameron?
Pete Cameron, alone.
Robin Tyler?
I have my son in the next room over making himself dinner, but no, you're nearly. I just have to let him know you're there.
And Dave Sharple's, our Town Planner, Dave?
Dave Sharple's, and I am alone.
Okay. The other folks here will be heard from later on. Our recorder, Dan Holder, is here this evening, as you can see. And so the first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of May 28, 2020. Anybody have a chance to look at those and comment on them? Pete?
Jen Martel has her hand up.
Oh, you're the identifier.
Mr. Chair, I just noticed, I believe Pete Steckler was a acting member that night. He's listed as alternate.
Okay, thank you for catching that. And Pete Cameron, did you have something?
Well, I thought we had tabled a set of minutes. Am I, Dave?
We did, and there were some corrections that Daniel Hoyer researched and got back and sent us a draft, but it wasn't in time to get it to you guys, so we're going to have it on the June 25th agenda.
Okay, then we should retable them?
I don't know if you tabled them to this meeting or not. I think you just-
I don't remember either.
I think, I think it's not an application, it's just the minutes. The draft minutes are out there and are available, but you know, I think it's fine just to wait till the June 25th meeting to act on them, review and act on them.
Okay. Now I'll add to my comments, opening comments, all votes during the viral meetings shall be done by roll call, as you already know, and to keep the discussion orderly, please use the raise hand feature with Zoom. Dave is kind of keeping his eye on that for us. So if there's a member of the public wishes to speak, or you see a raised hand, simply request the host, co-host, that they be allowed to talk and ask the participant to state their name and address once unmuted. So any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion regarding those minutes?
I have a, I have a comment.
Oh, yes, Gwen.
Sorry. And maybe Pete Steckler can help with this. On line 67, Pete, did you intend to have just the wildlife corridor in the rear portion of the site? Is that how you had described it? I didn't think it was, but-
No, it was not.
I didn't think so, so-
You can ask that.
I think that should be edited then, line 67?
Yeah, I had, I have a number of comments, and I flagged that one, but then I figured I'd clarify it elsewhere in the minutes, given that it comes up. But I mean, we can try to clarify it there if you'd like.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, I just, that just didn't sound right to me when I read it. I'll just give one, one other quick correction, and then Pete can, if you, if you want, go from there. On line 71, I think it probably should read "Develop a Corridor Study." It's written "Developer a Corridor Study" at the end, end of that sentence on line 71.
So can I jump in, Mr. Chairman, with some comments?
Certainly.
Yeah, so the comment Gwen raised for line 67, I think is actually a fairly accurate representation of the information that Dave had, you know, introduced the project, and there were some additional clarifications later on, so let me jump into those. First line 83, where it says workforce housing for 36 years with 60 acres. I just don't know what that means. If, if that workforce housing is tied to a certain 60 acres, it just doesn't make sense to me as written, so I didn't go back and listen to the tape to, to see what that means, but I think there's some clarification needed there. Line 85, I would suggest adding a new line between, where the, the line ends in pools before the lot line, and I would, I would suggest adding that Mr. Petropolis indicated that the applicant's wetland scientist considers the wetlands to be impacted by the proposed development as low value, and the reason, because that comes up later on, and I think that's a fairly remarkable statement that should be captured by these minutes. Then line 123, John's not here to check this, but I think after Mr. Petropolis on that line, I think Mr. Petropolis conceded that there is very little outdoor recreation space available, and that this is consistent with similar housing development projects going on nowadays, because the 59% open space doesn't really make a lot of sense and is not really consistent with the discussion that, or the point that John brought up was that there was very little recreational space around the development for residents to use. So if somebody else heard something different there, please let me know, but it's, that seemed like an important point to capture. Let's see. So line 127, I think this is where we can get some clarification about where it said east-west connectivity, and I would suggest instead of "and," between the New Hampshire fishing game wildlife area and the town forest to the east, I would add that to, so that context is provided. And then the entire exchange about spotted versus wood turtle is not captured by, by these minutes, and I think they need to be captured somewhere, even if the ultimate result of that is that the species of concern turned out to be spotted turtle and not wood turtle, given all the back and forth. And then at the end of line 134, I would suggest adding that Mr. Steckler requested that the Natural Heritage Bureau report be submitted to the Board, given the applicant's confusion about the presence of rare threatened and endangered species in exemplary natural communities. That was a request that we made, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Other comments? Somebody like to make a motion? Except minutes as the changes is noted.
Well, may, may I, Mr. Chair? I mean, I, I think some changes that Pete said were specific, but others were a bit general, like that needs clarification. I'm not sure what that means, if you vote on that. You know, like, I, I think that we need, maybe we could, you know, Pete could get us what he has in writing, and then we can, you know, send it to Daniel, and then the parts that he wants clarification on, he could, you know, Daniel can go back and redo the minutes and bring it back.
Good idea.
Like, it's not like a plan, because I'm hesitant, you know, like, if, if you ask, you know-
Too many blanks, yes, so-
Yeah, so, seems like they need a bit more work.
How about a motion to table for further review?
I, I-
Yes, Pete?
Oh, I, thank you. It did seem that Peter's comments were, were significant, and my concern had been, well, how were they missed by Daniel? Because several of these were significant additions, and it just seemed to me that I, I'll make a motion that we table until we get this, as David had suggested, until we can get a little bit more clarification here.
Okay. And Pete, I'd ask you, Peter, I'd ask you to maybe email to Dave those comments?
I'll do that.
Then that'll help move that along, and the same for anybody else with your comments, if you send them to Dave, and he'll get them to Dan, and we'll get it squared away. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, moved and seconded.
Bye, Gwen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we got one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six. I'm going to ask Peter to act again this evening, so he'll be acting, Nancy's alternate and Robyn's alternate, and we know Jen is a regular member. So then I will call for the vote. Nancy, your vote on the minute motion?
My vote as an alternate?
Excuse me, no. Thank you for questioning me. Gulp. Let's try Jen.
Aye, approved. Aye.
Okay, Gwen?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aaron?
I'm staying.
Pete Cameron? Aye, and I will vote aye, so that motion carries. All right. I'm going to readjust, readjust the, or not readjust, adjust the agenda this evening, and move to the Garrison Glen LLC. Tom Monahan is with us this evening, in case there's any questions, and thank you, Tom, for joining us. So if you could pull that out. Dave, do you have some comments you can share with us about this request?
Yes, the applicant has submitted a request that I enclosed in your packets for one-year extension of the site plan and conditional use permit approvals granted by the planning board on January 11, 2018, for the proposed construction of a single-story, 116,288 square-foot building and associated site improvements at the property located at 24 Continental Drive. The proposed building will contain office space, assembly spaces, and warehouse and distribution areas as proposed by the applicant. I did provide a suggested condition of, of approval, or, well, not of approval, a suggested condition, a motion to use for your convenience in the bottom of my memorandum. This, this has, this was adopted and approved in 2018. There's not, I'm not aware of any ordinance or regulatory changes, maybe outside the identification of 20-inch to 16-inch trees that would affect this extension request.
Any discussion on the part of the Board?
Chair, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I moved that a one-year extension to the conditional approvals granted for the site plan for Garrison Glen LLC, Planning Board Case Number 17-29 be approved. This conditional approval will now be valid through July 11, 2021.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Then I'll do the roll call of vote. Jen, let's start with you, please.
Aye.
Gwen?
Gwen, aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Aaron?
Aye.
Pete Cameron?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Passes and amissly, thank you, Tom, for being here. Carry on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Next item on the agenda, Continued Public Hearing on the Application of Brian Grissette for Review of a Yield Plan in Conjunction with a Proposed 16-Unit Single-Family Condominium Open Space Development and Associate Set Improvements on the Property Located off Tamarind Lane and Cullen Way. Properties are located in the R1 Low Density Residential and NB Neighborhood Professional Zoning Districts, Tax Map Parcel S 96-15 and 81-53, in this case Number 20-2. Dave, would you start us off, please, with your comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously noted, the applicant submitted a yield plan in advance of an open space development, as required per Section 7.7.1 of the zoning ordinance that states the dwelling unit density shall be determined using a yield plan which shall be provided by the applicant and reviewed and accepted by the planning board prior to proposing an open space development plan. The applicant appeared before the May 14, 2020, meeting to discuss the yield plan. The public hearing was opened, and a butter comments were received. The Board tabled further discussion on the application until tonight's meeting to provide the applicant adequate time to submit supplemental materials supporting the application. Subsequently, since that meeting, we received a letter dated 6/1, June 1, 2020, from the abutting property owners of 8 Tamarind Lane, expressing their support of the applicant's plan that was included in your packets. I also received an email dated June 5, 2020, from Allison Reese that I also enclosed that clarifies her statements made in an earlier meeting that were raised by the public about, Allison said some about, you know, the buildable, the buildability, or how buildable the lots were, and she sent me an email that I included in your packs with her clarifying that statement. I also received, before I continue on with my memorandum, I also received three letters today. I emailed two of them onto the Board, because I received one in time, both in time to send them along. One is, they're all dated June 11, 2020. One is from Timothy Britton, an attorney representing the Exeter Green Homeowners Association. I also received a letter from Lisa Blaken, 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 I hope I'm saying that right, also dated June 11, that I received at 4:25 PM. We did send that on. I apologize if you didn't get it in your email, maybe you didn't check your email, but I did send it as soon as I got it. And I also got one just about an hour and a half ago or so, from Lauren, hold on, let me get the name, I believe I know it, but I just want to make sure, from Laura Naught of 15 Tamarind Lane, that we will also forward on, but she mentioned that she will read it into the record this evening, so you will have, you will have that letter from her. Prior to the Board voting on the yield plan, if, if you get to that point, I would recommend that they go through, that you go through the criteria for the waivers and vote to grant or deny those waivers. The applicant supplied a letter with enclosures dated June 3, 2020, that sets forth their position on the waivers. The criteria for granting the perimeter buffer waiver is set forth in Section 9.6.2 that states the Board may approve a partial or total waiver to the buffer strip if the configuration or the location of the parcel, with consideration of abutting properties, warrants flexibility to the proposed green space. So that is the criteria, in my opinion, to waive if the Board waives that section, to consider that criteria. The waiver from Section 7.1.3 is governed by Section 13.7, and the applicant's letter noted above sets forth their arguments regarding this request. Please note that the letter argues a waiver is not needed and requests that the Board consider this question at the meeting. If the Board ends up granting the waivers, they can proceed to vote on the yield plan, and I provided motions for your convenience. I would reiterate what the Chairman said, that, you know, we use the raise hand function. I'm, I'm looking at all the attendees, we have 14 attendees, I have all names associated with them and not a number, and that tells me that they're all on Zoom, so they can use the raise hand function. If that's not the case, they can always call Bob Glawacki in the IT Department, and that number, his direct line is written on the bottom of the agenda, if they're having trouble. But I will monitor, when the public hearing is open, I will monitor those hands and write, write it down and make sure everyone gets to provide their input. And that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Attorney Passe, do you have, the floor is yours, I believe you'd like to pick up and review your presentation?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board, Justin Passe here from DTC Lawyers. I'm here tonight at my office in Exeter with Christian Smith of Beals Associates and Brian Grissette, the applicant in this case. And since our last meeting, we filed a, a letter, are we able to, I'm getting feedback from your computer, what, can you turn your blinds on? Yeah. I'm sorry. Since our last meeting on the 14th of May, we filed a, a letter, as Mr. Sharple has mentioned, dated 3 June, which really did four things. The first was to address this issue regarding Section 7.1.3 of the Site Review and Subdivision Regulations. The second was to address some comments made by Ms. Reese of Underwood Engineers, a town's engineer in this case. And then we provided formalized waiver requests from Section 7.1.3, 7.1.3, along with the argument that we don't need a waiver from that regulation, and a formalized partial waiver request from Section 9.6.1.2 of the regulations to permit a 50-foot buffer strip on Lot 5, where 100 feet is required by the regulations. We also provided a final yield plan, which Christian, I'm sure can throw up on the screen and hopefully is in front of you, and an updated financial analysis from the GOV Group. And then today, in recognizing that I didn't forward it with the package on June 3, I provided to Barb McAvoy two documents, which are referenced at length in the other materials provided to the Board. The first being a copy of, of the agreement between the Grissettes and the town, which may be relevant to the discussion tonight, dating 1991, and then the second is a copy of the White Appraisal that was done in accordance with the variance application that we submitted last fall, and which was approved on January 21 of this year, which again, we'll probably talk about today. So as, as Dave mentioned, our, our proposal for tonight is to just summarize our positions on the four issues as we, as we did in the letter that we filed, which of course, we do rest on. Obviously, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and a deliberation. Our request with regards to the Board's action tonight would be, if it pleases the Board, to first take up the issue of whether or not the applicant actually needs a waiver from Section 7.1.3 of the Site Review and Subdivision Regulations in the first instance. Of course, our position is that no waiver is required, because we have a variance to use this yield plan in this case. So our first request would be to, for the Board to take up that issue first. Of course, if it determines that we do need a waiver, it would proceed from there. And our executive summary tonight is just that we're hoping that the Board finds no waiver required from 7.1.3, and that you approve the partial waiver we've requested from 9.6.1.2, and that you accept the yield plan, because we would submit, it very squarely confirms with the regulations, is viable, is feasible, and is reasonably achievable in accordance with the town's regulations. And I think the bona fides of this project remain the same as they've been from the beginning that we've been trying to highlight, and they're worth remembering at the top of this thing. This is a modest proposal for a large chunk of undeveloped land. We are proposing 32-plus acres of property to be conveyed to the town, another 10-plus acres to be conveyed to the condominium association. A modest development on the available uplands of this property that has the express consent of the three abutters that are the closest to it, all of whom have filed their, their agreement with our proposals with the planning board, those being the two properties along Gray Bird Circle, and most recently, the letter filed by the Flaherty's of 8 Tamarind And we just highlight the fact that this has been a process that's taken over a year, as we'll talk about. We have obtained a variance, a special exception, you know, countless meetings with Mr. Sharple's and Doug Eastman of the town, and we hope that that, that means something in this analysis tonight. And then lastly, I just say at the top, a lot has been said about the Grissettes, and I think at some point, Brian would like an opportunity to address some of those less technical comments, more personal comments, and I think we'll reserve that, that right to do that perhaps tonight, but more likely at some point in the future. I want to start with a procedural history, and you may ask why. As, as Mr. Sharple's referenced, today, we received a letter from Attorney Tim Britton from Cleveland Waters &amp; Bass, who represents several people who live along Tamarind Lane and Cullen Way. I would note at the top that not all of them are in the Exeter Green Subdivision Association, as was represented in the letter itself. I would say first, I thank Tim for the professional courtesy, because he did give me a copy of the letter at 11:45 this morning, so it gave us an opportunity to actually read it and not be blindsided totally by it tonight. But, but that said, the bottom line with regards to this letter is that Attorney Britton and his clients are asking for the planning board to rewind time, start at the beginning of this whole process, cast aside the efforts and the permits that have been obtained over the course of the last year, and really put the planning board in a very difficult spot, as we'll explain. To summarize the letter, which we'll address, the request is really for the planning board to disregard more than a year's worth of permitting and entitlement efforts by the Grissettes, to disregard administrative decisions that were made by Doug Eastman last fall, to disregard variance relief that was unanimously granted by the ZBA that gives the Grissettes the express permission to use this yield plan in this case, disregard the fact that Attorney Britton's clients did not appeal Doug Eastman's decisions or the ZBA's grant of a variance as required by the law to preserve those arguments, the same ones they made today, disregard the, and indeed interfere with the town's contractual obligations to the Grissettes as negotiated in 1991, again, as we'll reference, and really make determinations outside of the planning board's jurisdiction regarding the effect of administrative decisions, the effect of variance relief, and the need for additional zoning relief. The request is really just to ask the- The request is really just to ask the planning board to sit as a code enforcement officer, the ZBA itself, and the Superior Court. And to use Attorney Britton's words himself, he wants the planning board to determine that the ZBA did not have the authority to grant the variance that it unanimously granted in January. So, to summarize, Attorney Britton's clients want to go back to the beginning before these issues uh, were resolved through the process that we've undertaken, and it's improper. So to talk about that process, more than a year ago, Mr. Grisette, Christian and I began a discussion with the town that involved several meetings with Doug Eastman, several meetings with Dave Sharples, and we reviewed the yield plan proposal and the site plan. And the, the point of that process was to identify issues in zoning and the regulations that we would have to address, and certainly to identify potential relief that we would have to seek. And that's what that process was identified for. And through that process, we determined that because one of the two properties in this case, the property that I refer to as the conservation property, it's a Mendez Trust property, it's the property that we proposed to convey to the town, because that property is in the NP Neighborhood Professional uh, Zoning District, where residential uses are permitted by special exception, one of the, the areas of relief we identified as needing was a special exception. Through that discussion with Doug and Dave, we also determined that there may also be potential need for ZBA relief regarding the quote, "transfer of density on the yield plan from the NP to the R1 where the development is proposed." We put together an application to the planning board for design review. We appeared before this board at the end of September 2019. At that time, we reviewed the yield plan, we reviewed the site plan, and we obviously sought input from the planning board. From our perspective, that was a very positive process and a positive response from the planning board. That night did mark, however, the beginning of the opposition from the neighbors. There was a lot of testimony from neighbors, a petition was presented to the board uh, of, of people who live along Cullen Way and Tamaran Lane and who opposed the project, many of whom are now part of the client base for Mr. Britton. After that design review and pursuant to the ongoing discussions with the town, we filed an application on November 4th with the ZBA. And that application sought relief, two forms of relief. Because this issue of the density transfer had come up, we sat down with Doug and, and was, were advised that he did not think that we could present the yield plan in the manner that we did without variance relief. So, we put together a very uh, comprehensive analysis of the town's treatment of yield plans in the past and of the law, and requested an administrative decision from Doug Eastman. So that request for administrative decision was made on 28 October, and it was obviously very broad. And the request was to determine what relief we needed to use this yield plan before the planning board. That request is in enclosure one to the, the letter that we filed with, with the planning board on June 3rd of this year. It is comprehensive, and it really advanced three primary arguments, those being that the zoning ordinance and the regulations allow what we're proposing, that the yield plan is not a transfer of density under 67421. That particular analysis involved comprehensive review of the legislative history to include the testimony offered by uh, the, the proponents of that measure uh, in 67421 at the time that it was adopted. And then the third real category of argument was that the, the town has a history of approving and allowing yield plans that do essentially the same thing that we're proposing in this case. So Doug responded to that comprehensive letter in, in an email to me on 30 October. And I think the language of that administrative decision is pivotal for the board to understand and consider. I'm just going to read it to you. It's short. It says, "I have reviewed your request for administrative decision dated 28 October 2019 regarding the ZBA relief needed to use the current draft yield plan for the Grisettes' proposal to the planning board for a single-family open space development. It is my opinion that the ability to transfer the density of residential units from the NP would first require obtaining a special exception from the ZBA to permit residential uses in the NP zone. This relief alone would not allow for the ability to transfer the permitted residential density from the NP zone to the Grisettes' property situated in R1, but only allow the use. It is my opinion that additional relief from the ZBA by seeking a variance would be necessary for the request to transfer density as, as described. I concur with your opinion that the Grisettes have reserved their development rights for the three subject properties, those being the Grisette property itself, the Mendez Trust Conservation Property, and the town property of Brickyard Park." He then says, "Please accept this as my administrative decision," and he lists our appeal rights. Importantly, we responded to him. I sent him an email that said, "Thanks for your time. From what provision of the zoning ordinance do we need relief from?" Doug responded, quote, "There is nothing in our ordinance that allows density transfer between zones. Therefore, it is not permitted, so any request would require a variance." The takeaway from this exchange and this administrative uh, decision is critically important. The decision relates expressly the Grisettes' ability to transfer the permitted residential density from the NP to the R1 for the purpose of the yield plan and the open space development in this case. The decision expressly states that variance relief is necessary to do that, and the obvious inference from that is that if we get the variance relief, we can do it. The decision also expressly states that the Grisettes have the reserved development rights on the town property. Importantly, the decision does not provide any explicit direction on the specific variance relief that we need. Now, as the board knows, uh, or, or if it doesn't know, if anyone disagreed with those administrative determinations from Doug, there's a process in place to appeal them. And that process is to file a, a request for administrative appeal to the ZBA. We were the only people, the only entities that did appeal that request, that administrative decision from Doug. And so on 4 November, we did a couple of things. The first thing we did was file an appeal from that decision. That appeal argued that we did not need a variance to use the density in the NP as depicted on the yield plan. The second application was a variance. That was a prophylactic. That was a, that was filed just in case our administrative appeal was not successful. And the third uh, application was the application we've always agreed that we had to pursue, which was a special exception to depict R1 residential in the NP for the purpose of the yield plan. As for the variance relief that we requested, this is again, critically important, especially in light of the arguments made by Attorney Britton. The specific relief requested, because we weren't advised by the town from which provision we needed relief, was intentionally very broad. We sought variance relief from Article 4.3 Schedule 2, which is the town's density and dimensional regulation, and the entirety of Article 7, which is the town's open space development ordinance. All of that was to permit what, what Mr. Eastman described as a density transfer between zones. So after several continuances because of um, weather, et cetera, we ultimately appeared before the, the ZBA on 21 January of this year. It's a very lengthy hearing. The same uh, opposition from the abutters and people within uh, the neighborhood was presented. We lost the administrative appeal by a close vote, 3-2. The ZBA granted the special exception to allow residential R1 and NP, and they, excuse me, they unanimously granted the variance request. And I think that the language of the variance approval itself is critical. And it says, quote, "The board subsequently granted a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, and Article 7, Open Space Development, to permit a single-family open space development in the R1 low-density residential zoning district which draws density from contiguous unimproved property in the NP Neighborhood Professional Zoning District as presented." So the result of the ZBA hearing process was that we had a special exception to show residential on the yield plan, and that we had a variance that expressly permits the Grisettes to use this yield plan in this application. As I've already referenced, and as I'll discuss in, in a bit, there was a process, a statutory process in place for the very active opposition to this project to appeal those decisions. And it involved filing a motion for rehearing within 30 days, and if that wasn't successful, filing a, a lawsuit to the Superior Court within 30 days after that. So none of that happened, and here we are several months later. So turning uh, uh, first to uh, a, a quick summary of the argument that we provided regarding section 7.13. Our position is that this section speaks for itself. The issue here is the language within the regulation itself, and I'm going to read it. "A yield plan is designed to provide the applicant with the board and the board with information regarding the available and viable building development that is feasible under conventional design. The yield plan shall be proposed by the applicant's engineer to ensure the information is valid and complete. The yield plan shall comply with conventional site and subdivision regulations amended October 10th, uh, 2019, and shall not require a variance from existing zoning ordinances in order to achieve a layout supported in the proposed density." So our first point that we've argued in this filing with you is that 7.13 certainly prohibits the planning board from accepting a yield plan that would require variance relief, but it does not prohibit the acceptance of yield plans which benefit from variance relief already. And that really makes sense under just a common sense approach. Under that same section, you have to make sure that the proposed yield plan is provided by an engineer, that it contains topography, man-made features, streets, lot lines, dimensions, and obviously it's got to comply with the zoning ordinance. It can't, for example, depict a bunch of small lots in, in this underlying zoning district, which could not be permitted. If that were the case, that would not be viable or feasible because it would have to be in, in receipt of a variance to accomplish that. Here, all of the lots on the yield plan comply with the R1, even those that are partially depicted in the NP. And we have an express permission from the, from the variance to depict that density in the NP for the purpose of the open space development. In reality, it's, it's, what we've done here to preserve our rights is no different than the process that we're undertaking to obtain a waiver for this hypothetical subdivision. No one has argued to date that somehow the planning board does not have authority to provide a waiver for this subdivision in the form of the 9.6.12 waiver, which uh, it relates to, to Lot 5 and the, and the vegetative buffer, because of course, that's within the purview of the planning board to do. The second argument is really that if 7.13 is interpreted to obviate the variance, that contradicts Doug Eastman's determinations. It contradicts the variance. It leads the, the town into the totally untenable position of exercising its zoning and police powers in a way that's confiscatory and is unfair on its face to the Grisettes and inviolative of other constitutional-type considerations which we've outlined. Um, that simply cannot be the way that the, the ordinance is, the regulation is interpreted in light of the, the plain language of the regulation.
Can I, can I ask a que, you said a bunch of things that I don't understand. Can you put what you just said into English, please?
I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Variance relief is the highest form of relief that can be obtained by any person in New Hampshire short of a, a court order. Variance relief is a constitutional safety valve. Where, where there is a decision or an interpretation of a zoning ordinance, well, let me say this. Exeter has a permissive zoning ordinance. That means if it says that you can do it, you can do it. If it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it, and you need variance relief. So, variance relief is a safety valve from what would otherwise be a taking, something, a, a, the, the town making it impossible for someone to reasonably use their land because the zoning ordinance says you can't do something or is otherwise silent on it. So we got a variance in this case from the ZBA because the town told us in order to use this yield plan, you need a variance. So we got a variance. Now there are arguments being made that because the regulation, not the zoning ordinance, the regulation within the site and subdivision regulations say that yield plans can't require a variance, that means that the, the planning board has to disapprove the, the yield plan. It's academic, and it's a, it's a, it's a semantical argument when I think the true intent of 7.13 is to say, you can't throw together a yield plan that doesn't comply with any provision of the zoning ordinance and then expect that you're going to generate the density for your open space development based on that yield plan. Of course you can't do that. The planning board doesn't have that authority. The planning board can't grant variances. But, just like the case where developer comes to the planning board and says, "Here's my conventional subdivision," and someone on the planning board happens to say, "Well, wait a second. The frontage on one of your lots is insufficient." Developer goes to the ZBA, gets variance for that lot for the, whatever reasons are applicable to that lot for the frontage variance, and then comes back. And then the subdivision can be approved. It's the same thing in this case. The yield plan from the town's perspective needed a variance. We got a variance, and now we're before the board asking for the board to approve it.
Much better. Thank you.
The third argument that we advanced in our filings was essentially that there are challenges being made to the, the yield plan that's presented to the planning board in this case, which would obviate the relief we already had. And the simple discussion point on that is that, as I've said already, there's a process in place to appeal administrative decisions. It didn't happen. There's a statutory process in place to appeal special exceptions and variances. It didn't happen. The suggestion in Attorney Britton's argument that, that somehow they weren't required is a tenuous argument at best. And then if you look closer at the cases that are cited, they stand for the inverse of what they're being uh, provided for. I'll reserve our, our, our rights to, to respond to Attorney Britton if, if it pleases the board after they speak. Of course, we have several points that we would like to make with regards to this last, uh, this, this letter that was received seven hours ago. Uh, among them, the fact that somehow uh, we need additional variance relief uh, and, and that somehow uh, the ZBA didn't have the authority to act as it did in January. We, we obviously disagree with those assertions, and perhaps I'll respond to those after they're made by, by Mr. Britton. So, the second major issue that we wanted to talk about, obviously, was the comments made by Ms. Reese of Underwood, the town's engineer, and I think this is basically, uh, hopefully, a resolved situation. There was a question at the 14 May 2020 hearing uh, about a comment made in an email by Ms. Reese that basically said, or questioned the buildability of some of these lots. She has since clarified and, and said essentially that instead of "buildable", she wants the word desirable. She intended the word desirable. So the sentence she read, or the sentence she said now reads, "Although in practicality, some of these lots would not be desirable, on paper, they appear to meet the requirements," which of course is within the purview of the town engineer, and we agree that the requirements have been met here. I think that's consistent with what Mr. Sharples has provided, particularly in his last memo to the board before the 14 May issue. Um, and so we'll leave it at that. I defer to the board at this point, Mr. Chairman. I mean, that concludes our, our summary of the argument that we advanced in 3 June with regards to the 7.13 issue. I would like to summarize at, at the appropriate time our perspective on the waiver criteria for 7.13, but only at the time that the, the board would like me to do that. I don't know if it isn't, intends to take public comment on what I've already said or on the issues I've already addressed, or if you would like me to proceed with the summary analysis on the waivers for both the 7.13 issue and the 9.6.1.2 issue, the vegetative buffer.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that. Um... What our, what the board's feeling is uh, regarding the 7.13, whether that, we agree that that does not need a waiver, not a variance, but a waiver because of what Justin has reviewed of this. Or do we, on the other hand, feel that should, because they are also prepared to request a waiver with the reasons, and that's all included in the material that was provided to us. So we thank you for that. So any comments, concerns, thoughts? Dave, do you have any?
I, I do. I just, just two quick things. One is you, you have received a legal opinion prior to this, prior to the last meeting, I think, a lot that, that addressed this uh, specific issue. Uh, so you have that. Also, uh, if my math is right, you have six regular members, and I don't think you're at a point of voting or anything, and everyone can participate, including alternates in the discussion. But if you move, if you close the public hearing, go into deliberations, it just needs to be the seven acting members that speak from that point on. the seven acting members that speak from that point on. So I would suggest you appoint one of the three alternates that is here tonight to make the seventh member. Your three alternates are Nancy Blanger, Peter Steckler, and Robin Tyner. I think I would suggest you do that now and appoint, so you have the seven members that are going to act if you get to that point or act on anything, for that matter, if you, you know, table it or what have you.
Okay, I believe I had appointed Peter a little earlier in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I must have been.
Clearly, I meant for him to act for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
So, that being said, any thoughts or concerns?
Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Peter, okay.
And then Pete Cameron has his physical hand up, so he'll be next.
It's attached, Dave, to my arm.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Uh, Compr. Your passe, Attorney passe. That was helpful because I was having a difficult time interpreting your letter. I guess that, you know, the one thing that I struggle with here is, as, as a, still a fairly new planning board member, there's a lot of gray areas in, in decision-making, and this one seems to be, to me, black and, fairly black and white, 7.1.3. And I think, you know, I guess I'm trying to appreciate the, the argument made about the tense of the word "shall," but it's, it's, I guess it's a little bit challenging for, for me. So anyway, I guess that's all to say. For me, this seems fairly black and white. You either, you know, you do, or you, you know, you shall not require a variance, or you shall, you know, you do or you don't, and I think that's what it kind of boils down to for me, and it is, I think, well, I'll just leave it there for now, but maybe, maybe you can help me out on that one, you know, sort of black and white statement. Thanks.
Next is Pete Cameron.
Pete Cameron. Yes. As much as there are, as I see it, there are three pieces here. I think we should take piece one first, resolve that, and then move on to the second and third as Jason had outlined. Maybe that's trying to simplify things, but this is, even though I'm supposed to have had some legal training, this is, this is fairly complex for the uninitiated. And so I would, I would like to, to, as I say, make, let's make the decision, or at least focus on the first part, and then it is possible, depending on where we go with the first part, that we won't even get to two and three.
The next that has a hand up is Gwen.
Gwen.
Well, I had it, but now it's.
No, I did. I did have it up, and then I was, I wasn't sure where to go after Pete's, Pete's comments, but this is a really complicated case, and you've, you've been very thorough, Mr. Passe, in your, in your review of this that came in our packet, and you really had to have a silent room and total concentration to dig your way through all of this. And I think I have the gist of it, but there are a couple of things that still trouble me, and one of them is sort of a moot point, and that is the definition of the word "shall." And I, I was kind of motivated to go online and research that word because it, it, it seems to have, it's a word of importance in this case, and what, it appears to me that, that, that attorneys were taught in law school that "shall" means "must," and that it was only through a Supreme Court decision somewhere along the line that the Supreme Court ruled that "shall" really means "may" and refers to the future. I think probably in our site regulations, the word "shall" probably was meant to mean "must." I, I don't think it was, I don't think there was any vagueness in, in that, in that sentence. But as you've gone on to say, this has already been reviewed by the zoning board, they've already weighed in on it, so that sort of catapults us into a whole new venue, which makes it incredibly, it's burdensome, I think, for us to try to sort this out and make a conclusion that isn't going to be litigated or fought somewhere down the road. So I'm, I don't think we're in a particularly enviable position right now. But I, I do have one question, and you may want to wait and answer this after Mr. Britton makes his presentation. I'm assuming he will be getting up to talk or talking to us online. But in his, on page four of his letter, he talks about the, about the yield plan relying on density from town property, and that sort of, that came out of the blue for me, and if you've, if you've talked about that already, I missed it, but could you address that? Because suddenly it seems like we're talking about a property that belongs not to the Mendez or the Grisettes, but, but it belongs to the town and, and would require further variance approvals, or some approvals, and I would love to have your comment on that.
Sure. I appreciate the question, Ms. English. And I think as Ms. Cowan already dutifully noted, this is complicated. I, I, I am certainly, we are certainly not intending to overcomplicate this. We are, on the, on the contrary, as you can see from the filings. The context of this proposal from the beginning was one that we knew we would encounter some form of opposition. We have, from the beginning, tried to dot every i and cross every t and be lockstep with the town regarding precisely what relief we need. And that is why we went to Dave and Doug at the beginning and said, this is the yield plan. This is the site plan. What relief do we need to use it? We disagreed with the relief that they said that we needed. We sought it anyways and obtained it unanimously. So from the first point that was raised, and Ms. English, I'll get to your point about the town property, the, the planning board is without the authority to ignore a ZBA decision that gives express authority to the Grisettes to use this yield plan in this case. I mean, so that's my first point. With regards to the town property, we have addressed this, and I know it's nuanced. This is, as I've shared with someone recently, like, this is as complicated a permitting case as, as you can, I'm doing a multi-million industrial square foot thing that's like far less complicated than this. And the issue here is the remaining land on the original Mu Tree Exeter Greens subdivision. That remaining land is the property where the Grisettes' house sit. In 1990 and 91, the Grisettes permitted Gray Bird Circle. The Grisettes are in privy. I have a contract with the town, as did Mu Tree before the Grisettes, who was the original developer of the Exeter Greens before, then essentially it went into foreclosure, and Mr. Grisette brought it, bought it. In an agreement that, that is with the planning board now, or is in the file, when the Grisettes permitted the Gray Bird Circle, they conveyed to the town 9.3 acres of property. That property is now Exeter Park, Exeter Brickyard Park, where the baseball fields are. That agreement, part of that agreement is, we're, we're going to give you this property, but in the future, we may develop the remaining land, which is the Grisette property in this, in this discussion, in this proposal, for conventional or open space development, and if we do open space, we reserve, and the town agrees, to let you use this 9.3 acres that's going to be the park for the purpose of your density. That's, that's the agreement from 1991. Part of our request for administrative decision was for Doug to verify that, and Doug did verify that. That's part of his decision. I acknowledge and agree. You are allowed to draw density from the three properties, those properties being the Grisette property, which is the remaining land, the Mendez Trust property, and the town property. So I hope that answers the question, but the, the bottom line is that there's a contract between the Grisettes and the town, and this exact, exact issue was contemplated 30 years ago, and the Grisettes reserved the right to use that 9.3 acres to, to, for density and future open space. It also said that they didn't have to provide any more rec space or additional open space with, with, with the future development, which of course they are under the, under the proposal. You know, they're conveying 32 acres to the town and another 10-plus acres to the condominium association.
Thank you.
And that was in your original letter.
It was or was not?
On the first of eight days that I spent going through it. Thank you for going through that again.
I remember that being reviewed when we first heard the case.
And, and I can chime in, Mr. Chairman, if I might, just for a second. I mean, we reviewed this at the TRC, and the, and the particular language, I'm looking at the agreement right now, and it says, "The petitioner and the town further agree that the land to be conveyed to the town of Exeter by the petitioner as described above, which includes the Brickyard Park 9.3 or so acres, shall continue to remain usable for the purpose of determining the maximum allowable density to be permitted on any portion of the remaining land to be developed as an open space development, and shall satisfy any requirement or option that recreational parkland be dedicated or given over to the town." So I, I think we reviewed it at the TRC. That was, you know, that was an agreement made a long time ago, and they said you can use it to, you know, for density purposes in the future.
Any other questions? Aaron, you just scratching your head or you raising your hand?
Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Okay. Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Gwen, for much more clearly asking the question about the, the term "shall" than, than I could. So I guess, you know, I have one more question, and I tried to write it down so it's as clear as possible, and this is just from my understanding. Through the ZBA approval process, was the approval for transfer of density explicitly referenced for use in the yield plan? And that's versus for any proposed development? I'm curious if it matters, because I, I feel like Mr. Passe referenced for a couple, a few times, at least a couple of times, the, the variance needed for transfer of density for the purpose of the yield plan, and I'm just trying to understand, was the ZBA, you know, was that approval explicitly for the yield plan, or was it for anything? And does that, does it matter? It, it kind of seems like it matters in my head, but I'm not sure it does.
I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Steckler, and the answer is, the variance request was for this exact process, this exact application, this exact yield plan. Again, we filed that application on November 4th. In, in March and April, Brian Grisette, Christian Smith and I were around tables shortly thereafter, and certainly through the summer, we were behind the table, across the table from Dave and Doug, on this particular issue, on this particular project. I mean, the, we've included all this material. I know it's luminous. I, I mean, I regret it myself. I look at it, and it's just an unbelievable amount, but there's, it's complicated, and we need to preserve our rights, and we need to preserve the administrative record here. I mean, the purpose of the variance was to say two things. First, we don't need a variance, okay? This has been done in the past. This is the way it works in Exeter. This is how it's been interpreted. But if we do, here's a variance request, and the variance request is to permit this exact yield plan to be used. And if you look at the actual language of, I read it, but I'm, I'm going to point to it again, the actual language of the approval, which also is in the packet, I mean, it was in, it was provided before the 14th of May, Dave put it in the packet before the last meeting. The quote language from the variance approval document that the ZBA generated was, "The board subsequently granted a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Densing Dimensional Regulations, and Article 7, Open Space Development, quote, 'to permit a single-family open-space development in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, which draws density from the contiguous unimproved property in the NP Neighborhood Professional Zoning District as presented.'" The "as presented" is this yield plan. It's this exact proposal. And we had this discussion at length about the bona fides of the, of this proposal, the surrounding properties, the specifics. It was afforded the highest form of, of relief a land use applicant in New Hampshire can get. And that's why we're relying so heavily on it, and that's why we're suggesting that the planning board does not have the authority to, to prevent us from using this approval on this issue, because it, it has already obtained the highest relief available to it. And I understand the issue with "shall." Believe me, I do. I think it's a contextual thing. I think when you consider the intent behind that regulation, the intent is to prevent people who want to do open space development from showing up to the planning board with a plan that's not engineered, which, with a plan that shows lots that don't fit, with a plan that shows frontages that don't work, and saying, hey, this plan shows 40 lots. I want to use 40 units in my open space. The point of 7.13 is to say, you can't, the, the planning board can't approve a yield plan that requires variance relief. We don't have the authority to do that, but, like any other plan that could come before the planning board, if the applicant goes and gets the constitutional relief that is required, the planning board's not in a position to say that relief isn't good enough, and I guess that's the point that we're making. I understand the word "shall," but with the relief that was afforded in the process undertaking, those processes have to mean something. They can't mean nothing. And, and the opposition here, which is saying, oh, we're going to redo it, and, and we didn't, we sat on our rights, we didn't appeal it, we've been involved the whole time, now we're going to argue that they don't mean anything. Well, the reason the statute exists is to give the applicant, and frankly, the town too, the ability to depend on decisions that are made and that are adjudicated in a timely fashion. So that's, that's our position on that.
Thank you.
Well, let's, let's open the meeting to the public, and they need to raise their hands so that Dave can see that I'd like to speak.
Tim Britton has his hand up.
Okay.
Mute button is on, Tim. Oh, okay, now.
It popped up and said unmute.
Perfect. We can hear you now. Can everyone hear?
Yes.
Mr. Plummer, members of the board, as indicated in my letter, I represent 14 families in the Exeter Green area whose property butts or is in the neighborhood of the proposed development of case number 20-2. We all know the three properties that are issuing, at issue in this case, and Brian Grisette, on behalf of Adella Grisette, seeks now for approval of a yield plan in support of an open space development to contain a total of 18 lots. There is no question that this yield plan depends on transferring density from both the Mendez property and the town property to the Grisette property. I've laid out the arguments of our position in my letter of June 11, which I submitted today, and, Justin, it was my pleasure to make sure that you had a copy of my letter as soon as I was filing it with the town, for fairness sake. But the bottom line here is, you can talk about the statutory scheme with respect to administrative decisions, and that's all in well and good, if the zoning board, in fact, had the authority. fact, had the authority to render the decision it did to transfer density from a lot in the NP zone to a lot in the R1 zone. And it is our position that the zoning board does not have that authority. The whole idea of being able to transfer density and development rights from one lot to another is considered innovative land use control within the meaning of RSA 67421. However, in order to create those rights, the zoning ordinance must specifically permit it. And there is no question that the Exeter zoning ordinance and the Town of Exeter at Town Meeting has never adopted the innovative land use controls allowing the transfer of, of development rights and density from one lot to another. And therefore, the fact that a variance was received is quite frankly meaningless. And there is certainly case law, which I'm sure Mr. Passa is going to talk about in a minute, that indicates that if the decision of the zoning board is outside the administrative process, then it is not subject to the statutory standards regarding a motion for rehearing and subsequent appeal to Superior Court. This all started with a case not cited in my letter, and that's Blue Jay Realty, which was the first case to determine that the statutory scheme is not sacrosanct if the issue is something beyond the authority of the zoning board of adjustment. We think it's quite clear that the ZBA did not have the authority to grant a variance, and it's quite clear that this entire proposal relies on a variance that was granted by the ZBA. And therefore, because that, the yield plan relies on that variance and the ZBA did not have the authority to grant that variance, we believe that the yield plan is invalid and may not be approved by this board. We've heard a lot of discussion about the word "shall" in the first hour of, of this meeting. And quite frankly, the yield plan on its face violates Section 7.13 of the Site Plan Review The language of that provision is quite clear. And we're all trying to do legal gymnastics to wordsmith that, that provision and say why it only provides in the case that, of a variance that has not already been granted, but it's okay if you get the, the variance first and then come to the, the planning board. But what 7.13 says is, "The yield plan shall comply with conventional subdivision regulations and shall not require a variance from existing zoning ordinance in order to achieve the layout supporting the proposed density." There's a reason for that. The purpose of the yield plan in an open space development is to compare the density proposed in the open space development to that which would be permitted under a conventional subdivision on the same lot without any variances or other special treatment. The purpose of that requirement is that you are not overburdening a parcel of land beyond its natural ability to be developed. And that's what's going on here. So the yield plan depicts lots on the Mendez property and on the town property. And as Justin may have gathered by now, I'm pretty new to this case, having just recently been retained. I certainly don't have the institutional knowledge that Justin has at this point in time, and as much as I would like to be, have been involved in this for the past year, I have not been. But the yield plan submitted depends on the density of two other lots. And in order to get that density, a variance was required, and that goes directly contrary to Section 7.13. Mr. Passa's argument relies upon an interpretation that "shall not require" only applies to the future. That is a baseless argument, in my opinion. The word "shall" states mandatory intent, and unlike the word "may," and I've cited a case in my letter, the word "shall" is not limited to the future tense. The argument that the yield plan does not require a variance because it already has a variance is logically invalid. I've used the analogy, a car requires gas to run even when the tank is full. The yield plan requires the variance even if it has already been granted, and the 7.13 language says, "We want to see a yield plan that shows the natural capacity of this land, how it could be developed under a conventional subdivision without a variance." I also have stated in my letter that regardless of how you interpret 7.13, this yield plan requires additional variances that have not been granted. I'm going to focus on the Mendez property. It is quite clear under Section 7.5.3 of the ordinance that land in the NP zone is not eligible for an open space development. So there is no question that the Mendez Trust property in the NP zone is an essential part of this plan. And therefore, the variance that was needed from the zoning board of adjustment was a variance from Section 7.5.3 to say that this parcel of NP land could be developed for open space, because this is a package deal. The trust property, the town property, and the Grisette's property, 9615, are all one big project for purposes of this open space development. Even though the trust property is not going to be developed, it's still being used to meet the overall density requirements, and we believe that is a violation of the ordinance as well, and there has been no variance relief granted to allow it. And because the yield plan relies on that Mendez property, we believe that this board should not grant or approve the yield plan that has been presented. I will reserve my comments with respect to the waiver requirements, as Attorney Passa has already done, if we get to that point in these proceedings. So in conclusion, we would ask you to deny the yield plan that has been presented.
Anybody else wishing to speak, Dave?
There are no hands up at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's hear what Anne has to say, please.
This is going to, uh, this is actually going to not be Anne. This is going to be Patrick Flaherty, but Anne is here with me. We are at 8 Tamarind Lane. We're, we're voicing support for one of the other motions here in front of you. We want to make sure that we understand what motion is actually being discussed, or whether all of the motions are being considered at this time before I make any further comments.
The board is in discussion. They haven't gone into deliberations. It's just any, you know, they're talking about the, uh, as a whole at this point.
Oh, okay, as a whole. All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. We thank you as well. Anne and myself are at 8 Tamarind Lane. If you're following along on the PDF, our letter is on page 10 of that document. With regards to Mr. Britton, as well as Mr. Passa's comments around the variance and the legality of what, what their specific arguments have been around right now, we had, we had retained counsel for approximately one year and gone through a lot of the arguments and discussions and raised a lot of the same questions that the different board members, Gwen and I believe it was Molly, had also raised, as well as Pete. Based on the discussions and, and pursuit with our attorney, that's one of the many reasons why we have supplied the letter of support specifically with regards to the yield plan, but in particular around the buffer requirement. That's, that's probably one of the other motions that you're going to consider a little bit later on. The yield plan itself, at least to us, is a highly technical process, so we appreciate the board's time and consideration and diving into the details, as well as Justin and Tim both walking us as the uneducated public through those, those various pieces and parts. To maintain my comments around the yield plan, I want to just stress that we do support the yield plan. We are the neighbors that are going to be most specifically and directly impacted by this, specifically the buffer component of it. With, with respect to the folks on the end of Gray Bird Circle, I think all three of us are going to bear a wide berth of the issues and development, and at the same time, we are in support of that yield plan, as well as the buffer being reduced from 100 feet down to 50 feet. We have not joined the group of 14 households that are referenced earlier here today. We're, I mean, we may come back with more comments later on. I feel like the conversation has really been around the technicality of the variance, but I wanted to make sure that that was a part of the record, that our letter, which Dave referenced earlier, was also put in front of you and understood our support for that. And if I need to come back on and voice more support when that motion in particular comes up, I'll be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hand ups, hands up at the moment. Oh, wait a minute, there's a panelist with their hand up. Nancy?
Yes. I believe I can still ask questions at this point because I'm, even though I'm an alternate, correct? Okay. Let me see if I can, Dave, you're muted now. Okay. Um, I'm going to try to ask two question, a two-part question and be as clear as I can, but Dave, part one is for you. You read the agreement. We didn't have that in our packet, and my understanding, it was sent late and we didn't get it today, so I have, it's hard for me to not have it in front of me. The agreement between the Grisettes and the town is dated 1991, correct? I believe. So, so I, the reason, and I'll, let me explain why I'm asking this question. Because Attorney Britton's letter and position talks about the fact that the Grisette property and the Mendez property and the town property combined are the request for density, if I'm saying this correctly. So my question is, the Grisette property and the Mendez property are two separate properties, correct? They, they were never merged, if that's the right term? So does that 1991 agreement pertain to the Mendez property or only to the Grisette property? Do you understand what I'm saying? We're talking about an agreement with the town that the density would be considered at a later date, but it's my understanding that we're talking about two separate pieces of property. So does that agreement include both Grisette property and the Mendez property?
I believe it only includes Grisette's property because it came from Grisette's property. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave.
Well, it says, "The petitioner and the town agree that the remaining land depicted on the subdivision plan and consisting of approximately 41.43 acres, if subsequently developed, may be developed in any fashion which is in accordance with the most current Town of Exeter zoning ordinance." It also goes on to mention that, as of this date being March 1991, the petitioner is proposing to create nine conventional lots on the remaining land, and upon approval of proposed subdivision, will convey to the town of Exeter 9.3 acres for recreation purposes, the land shown on the attached exhibit, which will include the land previously agreed to be conveyed by Charles Mutry. So it includes 43 acres, all 41.43 acres, including that Brickyard Park, but whether it was Grisette or Mendez, I'll let-
Or combined, that's the question I have.
Well, I'll let, Justin, do you know, Mr. Passa, do you know that answer?
At the ti, in 1991, the Mendez Trust property was not owned by the Grisettes. That was purchased in 2000. The, the language in the agreement, the 1991 agreement, which I can throw up on the screen if, if I can figure out how to do it, maybe, Christian, you can show me how. I have it on my laptop, just pulled up already, but the, the point of the agreement was intentionally broad. It was, if any of the remaining land is developed, you can use it, you can use this 9.3 acres for density. That was the point. And that's what's being proposed.
So can I follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, of course.
So, so the agreement, though, is really with the town is for the Grisette property that doesn't include the Mendez property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm also, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, that's fine.
No one is, no panelists or attendees have their hands raised.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
Me again. Sorry. I forgot one of my questions. So Attorney Britton, with your letter, you didn't address the agreement with the town. Do you have anything to say with that agreement in mind? You've taken that into consideration? Does that change your position at all? And I'm only asking because I don't see it addressed in your letter.
Mr. Britton has his hand up to respond. You have to unmute yourself, Mr.
There we go.
Um, I, I do not have that agreement before me, so I don't have the ability to answer your question directly. But, but I just heard Mr. Schaprell's say is that the purpose of that letter was to allow the remaining land to be developed for nine lots. So now we're talking about a development considerably more than nine lots.
Thank you.
No, the nine lots reference, the subdivision that was being proposed at that time, that was Gray Farm Circle, those exist, Gray Bird Circle, however, those exist. So it wasn't, and then they were reserving their rights of the remaining land, particularly the 9.3 acres that they were dedicating to the town to use for future density on an open space development, which they do show on the yield plan, and I think there's three lots of density that they get out of that land.
Irrespective, the yield plan still depends on the Mendez lot, and it relies on a variance that we claim was invalidly granted. And even if that variance was validly granted, it runs contrary to the express language of 7.13 of presenting a development that did not need any variance relief in order to accomplish it.
If I may just respond to Attorney Britton. This is, I was a little bit worried about the, how far into the weeds we're getting here. As, as the planning board is well aware, in the context of the Rose- As as the planning board is well aware, in the context of the Rose Farm matter, I mean, the these yield plan things become very legally nuanced and, uh, very, uh, arduous to get through. But I just want to remind everybody about just the basic civic issue of the point of the zoning ordinance and the point of the subdivision and site review regulation, okay? Section 7.7.1 is the zoning ordinance that regulates the production and of of a yield plan in an open space development and how density is accomplished.
Okay.
And that provision, 7.7.1, says that the yield plan is used to determine the density that is reasonably achievable. That is the standard, reasonably achievable, under a conventional subdivision, following the the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision and site review regulations of the town. The dwelling unit density shall be no greater than that allowed by the yield plan unless the density bonus can be applied. The planning board shall adopt regulations that provide for the generation of a yield plan in accordance with this article. That is the authority from which the planning board derives its ability to to promulgate regulations to 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 interpret this ordinance. The planning board's job is to adopt regulations that provide for the generation of a yield plan. Those regulations do not somehow supersede the zoning ordinance, and that's the argument that's that's being advanced in this, that the 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 planning board regulations, which don't require town meeting vote, just require the vote of of a of a majority of the planning board members, somehow supersedes all of Article 7, which we have a variance from. We intentionally, again, to refresh everyone's recollection, Mr. Eastman did not give us a a regulation from which we needed variance relief. He just said, you need variance relief. Our response was to get very, very broad variance relief. We got variance relief from the entirety of Section 4.3, Table 2, which is the dimensional regulations of the town, and the entirety of Article 7. An argument being advanced tonight is that, well, we needed specific variance relief from 7.5.3. We got variance relief from the entirety of Article 7. This argument that's being advanced, that the ZBA didn't have the authority, relies on a lot of misinterpretation. The first thing, by definition, open space development transfers density. That is the definition of open space development. You take several contiguous lots, you develop a conventional subdivision plan, you determine what the density is, and then in some portion of those lots, not all of them, you develop what was formerly called a cluster subdivision.
Yeah.
The regulations themselves contemplate use of contiguous lots. An argument that we have beat to death in the in the in the in the paperwork we've given you and before the ZBA was the argument that's being advanced tonight. Again, this, we we are now arguing over things that were that happened nine months in the past, that was reviewed by the town staff, administrative decisions were provided over, nobody appealed them, and now they've been resurrected for the point of of making an argument today. That said, this is not a transfer of density. We provided in your packet a legislative overview of the point of RSA 67421 in this context. Ben Frost, who at the time was working for Planning and Development with the state and who is now with New Hampshire Housing, a lawyer himself, stood on the floor of the Legislative Assembly and talked about what the point of adding the word density to that portion of 67421 was, and he explained it like this. There are places where the master plan emphasizes development in towns and places where the master plan emphasizes conservation. To provide a way for for people in town who happen to own unimproved property in the conservation area, areas where town want to preserve, to get a reasonable use out of their property, a density or development right transfer to non-contiguous property, usually in like an urban downtown area where the town wants to see redevelopment, can be had. That arrangement allows the guy who owns the unimproved property to get use out of his property whilst simultaneously advancing the purpose of the master plan, which is usually to 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 redevelop into better property, places that otherwise don't comply with the zoning ordinance. That is the point of density transfers. That is not what is being proposed right now. The NP district allows very high density. As you'll see on the yield plan, we just proposed a simple R1 density in the NP. The average lot size on on the yield plan is 150,000 square feet, okay? That is approaching more than four times the lot requirements for the R1. The whole point of this thing all along was to be very, very conservative, to depict large lots. And when you consider what the board already has seen, the Rose Farm example is the best example. That open space development involved three parcels. They were all in different zoning districts.
Yeah.
R1, R2, and R4. Nobody said boo about a requirement for the developer in that case to get a variance to quote-unquote "transfer density." They weren't required to do it. That case is still in litigation. When all is said and done, it'll be an over-two-year process in the appeal process of that case, and no one once has raised the issue that a variance was required for the transfer of quote-unquote "density" in that case. It's because it's not a transfer of density. It is little, it is literally contemplated by all of the regulations to take development on one parcel and through the open space yield plan review process, allow it to be condensed in a different area of the parcel. So now we have a special exception that allows us to depict the very large R1 lots in the NP, and we have a variance that specifically says, you can use this yield plan in this case for this R1 development. And the argument is somehow that that is not enough, which means there's nothing on planet Earth that can be accomplished by this applicant to do this, which is a legal, uh, it's a taking. If that's the case, if a variance doesn't mean what it's what it purports to mean and what it means in New Hampshire Jewish prudence, it's a taking by the town. There's just no other way to look at it. And and the the second point with regards to Attorney Britton's comments is that somehow this is legal gymnastics. We acknowledge it's complicated. I wish it wasn't written the way that it was. I think that's an unfortunate position, though, that it's legal gymnastics. What this really is, is a very deliberate process over more than a year to be as transparent as possible with the town, to be as transparent as possible with the neighbors, to affirmatively request the review by the town staff to to determine the relief that we need, to get that relief, and then to proceed accordingly. So this isn't legal gymnastics. This is just reliance on the process that we have, and I think we have to uphold the integrity of that process, and we can't allow this to be reopened into a debate over things that are well settled, when the people who are advancing those arguments did not take the steps necessary to preserve their rights under those arguments. And the last point I'll make is on that point. There is a a portion of the law that's cited by Attorney Britton that permits people, when there is a totally legal issue, to file for declaratory judgment without having gone through the statutory process outlined in RSA 677 and the in the 30-day timelines and everything else. Those cases are, I would note that the letter does not reference any case where where what is being suggested by Attorney Britton occurred. The inverse is true. In those cases, the Supreme Court said, you sat on your rights, you don't get to advance that argument. But when that argument has worked, it's been when an applicant has been denied constitutional rights, or when an applicant or decision was based on a statute, and the issue is whether or not the decision made by the ZBA is peculiarly legal. If it is, there is a right to pursue declaratory judgment through the courts. If it's not, if the review by the ZBA was a standard, fact-based review about an application, then across the board, the Supreme Court has held, and what the Superior Court would hold in this case, if we litigated it, is that the local municipal ZBA is and should be the first body to look at this. If it's not legal, if it's applying the zoning ordinance, then that's, then the statutory timelines apply, and you're out. If it's day 31, you're out. In this case, we've had involvement from the beginning, nobody appealed anything, and now we're trying to resurrect resurrect the argument. There's no question that this was about as standard a ZBA case as you can get. As I said, Exeter has a permissive zoning ordinance. If it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it. So Doug's interpretation was, I don't see where it says you can do it, you have to get a variance. We presented all the variants, we got an appraisal, we went through an exhaustive review process, we got the variance to use this yield plan in this case. No one appealed it, that is the law of this case. And if it goes to court, that's what I I have every confidence in the world that that's where the end the end result of this case will be.
Can I respond to, um, Attorney Passay? Hearing no objection, I will.
Yeah.
So there, I I, in listening to, um, Attorney Passay, I see that we can agree on one point, and that is that a legal issue is outside, um, the administrative process, and I would submit to you that this is a legal issue. The legal issue is whether or not the ZBA had the authority to grant, uh, a variance allowing for a transfer of density from one lot to another lot. Let's go back and look at what the variance motion was. Specifically, it said, a motion to approve the requested variance from Article 4.3, Schedule 2, and Article 7, to permit a single-family open space development in the R1 zoning district, which draws density from contiguous, unimproved land in the neighborhood professional zoning district. So it's quite clear that the entire purpose of that variance was to draw density from one lot to another. Now, I also agree with Mr. Passay that multiple lots can be the subject of an open space development, and as long as all of those lots are part of the open space development, then that can be done. The problem here is the Mendez property is in the NP zone, and 7.5.3 makes it very clear that an open space development can only be done in the urban residential, the R1, the R2, the R3, and the R4 residential zones, not the NP zone. The Rose example clearly involved parcels in multiple residential zones that permitted open space development. Mendez Trust property is not part of this open space development. It is a standalone lot, and they're transferring density from the Mendez property to the Grissette property 9615. We think that is impermissible, and we will stand on that, and, um, I think it is a a question that perhaps this board can't can't resolve, but, um, I will take my chances in Superior Court on this issue as well. And regardless of all of that, you still have to come back to 7.13 and read that regulation for what it says, that you can do a conventional subdivision on the lot proposed to be developed. The Mendez property is not part of the lot proposed to be developed. And in order to develop the 9615, the lot to be developed, it relies on a variance to increase the density of that lot beyond its natural capacity that could be achieved
There's no other attendees or panelists with their name up. I just, I will mention that. I will mention that I did, you know, we we've talked about the letters. I don't know if the brothers that submitted the letters today, uh, are gonna speak, but just suffice to let them know and let everyone know that they are complete part of the record now. I got them, you know, we will distribute, uh, them, they are, they are in the record, but I I wa, a la, one of the ladies indicated that she was going to speak, but, um, she's free to do so, but they are part of the record. Laura Knott has her hand up.
Laura Knott, Laura?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, I I am at 15 Tamron Lane, for the record. Um, I would like to express my concern and disapproval of the proposed yield plan. Tonight's meeting, um, is to determine the logical density, number of homes that could reasonably be achievable on Mr. Grissette's land. What he is proposing is beyond the capacity of the land and should not be supported. I recommend that the planning board examine this proposal closely and work to understand every detail and nuance, because as we discussed, there's a lot of them. Because all of these nuances and Mr. Grissette's strong desire to describe every detail of this plan, it seems to me that the land was never meant for this many houses. Several times, Mr. Grissette has stated that this is the third phase of the Exeter Green development. I want to state for the record that this is simply not true. There is no documentation from any official records, other than Mr. Grissette's own statements, that this was the intention of the original developer, Mr. Charles Moutree. The roads were not laid out to support another development off Exeter Green, and the wetness of the land does not support another development off this land. This so-called third phase was not detailed out on any original plans and was never intended to be developed. The reason this land was designated as quote-unquote "remaining land" and excluded from the Exeter Green covenants was because it simply did not have a house on it at the time of the covenants writing, and therefore would have violated this protective covenant. There never was a third phase of development intended for this neighborhood. I do not support the applicant's proposed yield plan for a number of reasons discussed below. Number one, the proposed yield plan requires a variance from existing zoning ordinances. I believe we've discussed that at great length tonight, so I won't cover exactly what I wrote here. Um, but additionally, there are private rights of ways that are required, um, and there are shared driveways. Uh, number two, the wetlands are not accurately portrayed and are included in the density calculation. I strongly urge the planning board to take a look at the Exeter, New Hampshire GIS maps available publicly online, uh, maps online dot net slash Exeter, New Hampshire. If you look at the three properties Mr. Grissette is proposing to draw density from in order to create this yield plan, you will see that the majority of the Mendez Real Estate Trust and the Grissette property itself are in flood zones AE or X500, um, and I've included in a figure in my in my letter, uh, showing that. Um, but per FEMA, the flood zone AE indicates areas at high risk for flooding, and flood zone X500 indicates areas at moderate risk for flooding. The soil drainage map layers on on that same website, uh, again, show that most of the properties are poorly drained, very poorly drained or ponded. And then finally, the wetlands and parcel wetlands layer shows that much of the properties are considered either prime wetlands or parcel wetlands. Based on these maps, I would encourage the board to take a closer look at the total estimated wetland impact of only 13,661 square feet. Um, the perimeter, number three, the perimeter buffer waiver is required for this yield plan to work. Um, the perimeter buffer strip of 100 feet, typical of R1 residentially zoned areas, should be required across all the yield plan area. There's no reason to grant Mr. Grissette a waiver from a standard requirement just so he can include more houses in his density calculation. And then, number four, there's an inaccurate note on the right-hand side of the yield plan that states, quote, "Exeter Green covenants allow developer to add lots to the previously approved subdivision," end quote. This note is not included on the Exeter Green covenants, nor is it true. The property being discussed is not subject to those covenants, as we've said before, it's considered remaining land, and as such, that note should be removed from this yield plan. The proposed yield plan is taxing the existing land beyond what it was ever intended to hold. Mr. Grissette's detailed explanations conveying the nuances of this plan, this yield plan, the hours-long planning and zoning board reviews discussing this topic, and his lengthy legal opinion letters only add to the fact that there is enormous question about whether this density is reasonably achievable on this land. This bending of the town ordinances to fit his financial need has gone on long enough. Mr. Grissette surrendered surrendered his ability to develop this land when he developed Gray Bird Farm Circle in 1993. He now has no appropriate access to this land, and so is forced into an open space development concept in which he is trying to yield as much financial gain as possible from an open space development. from an unbuildable property. This yield plan includes incomprehensible maneuvering of existing zoning laws and dilutes the real issue that the land is almost entirely unbuildable. This yield plan should be firmly rejected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura.
Next up, Neil Blaken has his hand up.
Okay, Neil?
Or it might be Lisa.
Might be Lisa this time.
Can you, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Sorry, apologies. This is Lisa Blaken speaking, sorry.
Our apologies. So we're, I'm at 11 Tamrin Lane. I'm here with my husband, Neil. I did submit a letter earlier today, and I'll just read that. I know it's in the record. But I'm going to follow on some of the themes that Laura so articulately laid out. And thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. As a Tamrin Lane resident, I wish to express my concerns about the yield plan for the open space development proposed by Brian and Adella Grissette, Case 20-2. While I understand that the yield plan review is limited solely to the yield plan and not to consider the site plan, I also believe there are inherent features of this site that should be mentioned in considering the "available and viable building development" that is feasible under a conventional design as the site and subdivision regulations state. It's worth noting that drainage, stormwater, and wetlands concerns about future development of this property have worried Tamrin Lane and Cullen Way of Butters for several years. Such concerns are noted in the minutes of public meetings almost 30 years ago regarding the development of Gray Bird Farm Circle. At that time, a Butters voiced concerns about drainage issues and wetlands and worried about impacts from the Gray Bird Farm Circle construction. These concerns continue today and have been raised in public meetings to discuss this proposed development. As these parcels of land contain both freshwater forestage shrub wetlands and freshwater emergent wetland and scammon brook, which is included within the Exeter Shoreland Protection District, I understand that this requires, this development would require both a conditional use permit for shorelands protection and a conditional use permit for wetlands conservation overlay district as indicated in the application for subdivision that the Grissettes filed on January 14. While conditional use permits are not issued until further in the planning process, I find it hard to consider what is feasible under a conventional design without noting some factors that influence the design. One particular area where there are potentially several such impacts is the proposed subdivision's Wild Apple Lane subdivision road. In the yield plan, access to five lots, lots 8 through 12, is achieved via the proposed Wild Apple Lane subdivision road. Per the applicant's description, Wild Apple Lane accesses the property via 75-foot development right-of-way deeded to the Grissettes by their business partner in 1993. Wild Apple Lane also provides frontage for 11 of the 18 proposed yield plan lots, lots 3, 6 through 12, 14, and 16 through 18. It's difficult to discern, discern on the yield plan, but it appears Wild Apple Lane likely encroaches, perhaps substantially, on the Shoreland Protection District for scammon brook after the brook passes under Tamrin Lane via a culvert maintained by the Town of Exeter. Accessways within 100 feet of perennial brooks located within the Exeter Shoreland District require conditional use permits. Scammon brook is already listed as an impaired water body under the State of New Hampshire's Water Quality Standards for total maximum daily load. Seems difficult to determine that this access and frontage via Wild Apple Lane is viable and feasible for this yield plan under conventional design. Such a use requires a conditional use permit to be granted by the Planning Board. In addition to the wetlands and shorelands concerns, I want to echo some of Laura's comments about the flood zones. Significant portions of several lots on this yield plan appear on National Flood Hazard Maps, to be in flood zone AE, an area of special flood hazard, defined as an area subject to inundation by the 1% annual chance flood event determined by detailed methods. Lots 3, 6, 7, 15, 16, 17, and 18 appear as though they may all well be in zone AE. Mandatory flood insurance purchase requirements and flood plain management standards apply. Special construction approaches also apply. One wonders about the construction cost, the desirability of a home in an AE zone, and the impacts of building on these lots. Is this design with 18 units covering all of the upland area and a good portion of the flood zone actually feasible and viable? Are these particular lots feasible and viable? As described in the zoning ordinance, an open space development aims to promote the conservation of open space and the efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features. It would be an unfortunate, unfortunate outcome for the land, its inhabitants, and its neighbors to ultimately be overburned beyond its capacity by this theoretically yield plan design and in its ultimate design. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
The next person with their hand up was Anne Flaherty.
Anne?
Yeah, we just were able to unmute. This is Patrick again. I just wanted to chime in and clarify that, and Lisa may have just done this, but there is a right-of-way that would access a good portion of that property. That right-of-way is utilizing our property itself to get to these, to these parcels and land from Tamrin Lane. As noted, it was put in place, I believe, back in around 1993. Was part of public discussion and was also part of a lot line adjustment that occurred at that time and went through the various forms. I think that probably will apply more to site plan discussion. But again, I wanted to just clarify, since a couple of the other folks had mentioned the right-of-way that is in existence.
Thank you.
Christian Smith has his hand up.
Christian?
I, I am not Christian Smith.
Oh, excuse me.
Some days I wish I was. I'm just going to very quickly summarize something that I wanted to respond to, if it's okay with the chair, and then I'll pitch it to Christian. If the Grissettes were proposing the development that is depicted on the yield plan right now, which has been vetted by the town engineer as, as meeting all requirements, has been vetted by the town planning staff as meeting all the requirements, and is in the receipt of the only relief from the zoning board that it needs, a special exception, to depict R1 density in the NP. If that was the proposal that we are here on today, there'd be nothing to, to stop, and we would expect an approval. And that development could be developed. When you consider the point as stated in the regulations of a yield plan, it is to consider what conventional subdivision could happen on the property. The subdivision depicted in the yield plan could happen on the property tomorrow. We meet all requirements, we have the relief that we need. The issue here is that what is being referred to and which I've argued is not a density transfer. We would kind of understand that argument if the proposal contemplated taking density in the NP, which is technically much higher than what's allowed in the R1, and pushing it into the R1. But that's not what's being proposed. What's being proposed is massive 150,000-square-foot lots that more than satisfy any zoning district in the town across portions of the NP. And then, using that density, permission for which we have expressed permission from the ZBA in the open space development. This notion that somehow, quote-unquote, "density" is transferring from one lot to another is literally the definition of an open space development. And I point once more to, to Rose Farm. There were three properties, R1, R2, R4 districts. The R2 and R4 obviously allow a lot higher density. In that case, higher densities from those districts actually were going into the R1, and there was no variance relief pointed out. Here, massive R1 density in the NP, we have a special exception, and that development depicted on the yield plan could be developed and approved tomorrow. And that is the entire point of what a yield plan is, to show what conventional subdivision development could obtain on those parcels. With that, I'll tip it over to Christian.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, Christian Smith of Beals Associates. I'm using a headset, and I just want to make sure the microphone's working okay.
Sounds are coming through fine here.
Okay, great. I just kind of wanted to walk through Mrs. Knott's letter as this is a virtual reiteration of what she said at the last hearing as well. And I just wanted to point out some inconsistencies. Specifically, as we walk through the letter, she talks about wetlands and wetland buffers are considered viable building land for the calculation of a yield plan. You follow that up with the cited lots 2, 4, 8, 11, 12, 16, and 17 not showing the accurate percentage of wetlands. What those numbers on the individual lots depict, in this zone, you're requiring 40,000 square feet for a building lot. 25% of that can be wetlands. So the percentage that we show is the percentage of that 40,000 square feet required minimum lot area is what that number is, or what that percentage is of wetlands to come up with and demonstrate that it's not more than 10%, excuse me, 25%. With regard to the wetland buffers and setbacks, I just have to simply disagree with that. We have absolutely every setback labeled different line type. It is a very busy plan, there's a lot going on out there. But that, that is just simply inaccurate. Similarly, the perimeter buffer strip is not shown. After the last hearing, we have provided the Planning Board with a plan that does indeed show the 100-foot buffer. And again, based on that plan, heard plan, which I know Mr. Sharples has seen as well, and I assume the board members have seen, the only lot that we would be requesting a 50-foot reduction on that would be Lot 5. And that's exclusively. So that kind of covers C1, 2, and 3. Six houses are accessed off Kingston Road but are considered part of the subdivision. That is correct, but they take their legal frontage off the proposed road. Again, this is not, you know, maybe a sexy-looking conventional yield plan, but as we've discussed with Mr. Sharples and with, with your code enforcement officer, it does meet every letter of the, of the code. Six lots do not have the minimum frontage on the road from which they are accessed. That is not a requirement in the town's regulations. You do not have to have your driveway through the lot's legal frontage. So that is, is a moot point. Two lots are accessed through a private right-of-way. Lot 7 is accessed via a private right-of-way over Lot 6. And similarly, she talks about 17 over Lot 16. Those are not private right-of-ways. Those are simple and common access easements that are extremely common to every common driveway that happens in, in subdivision throughout the State of New Hampshire. Let's see, we're talking about now, each lot shall be created with its own driveway. We have reviewed this with Mr. Sharples. Essentially, the, there are three lot, or excuse me, three pairs of lots that are accessed by a common driveway. And as far as we understand, that is perfectly viable and allowed by the regulations. The right-of-way at 8 Tamrin Lane is not clearly shown on the yield plan. It is a fairly heavy line, line type. We can do it in color if that pleases the board, but I don't think I've heard from the board that they have had any difficulty recognizing what the right-of-way is coming at 8 Tamrin. The plan, this plan assumes use of a private right-of-way that is not included at Exeter Green covenants and installing a road through this right-of-way. That is actually, again, a 75-foot-wide triangular access easement that Mr. Grissette retained when he flipped the Flaherty parcel. What the proposal would be is that would become a public right-of-way at the point that the conventional subdivision were to actually be, you know, developed and built. Building envelope, we go back to the building envelope of 25 by 25, and that's not the building envelope, that's a proposed house box. That is, you know, what we understand has become the town standard that was actually determined by this board. And it's very clear, if you look at the newly provided yield plan, every one of those parcels and building envelopes, the actual red hatch building envelopes, could sustain a house that was larger than 25 by 25. We were just simply responding to what we were told is now the standard for the yield plan. And with regard to the yield plan and the Exeter Green covenants allowing the developer to add lots, I believe that is correct. And I know that Mr. Grissette has provided endless documentation to this end on many occasions. And I guess the final thing I'll touch on is the, the conversation specific to the 100-year floodplain. And that actually, the AE zone, what that means is as opposed to just an A-zone. An A-zone is a guess without elevation. The AE zone, that means FEMA has actually established the elevation of the flood zone in that area. And that's exactly what we follow, that's exactly what's depicted on the yield plan. And there is not one single house depicted within that zone. And I think that about does it for me, Mr. Chairman. I will give the floor back to you.
Thank you, Christian.
Two hands up, Tim Britton's hand's been up, but I'm not sure if it's leftover. So it would be Tim Britton and then Laura Knott, in that order.
Okay.
Unless Mr. Britton's hand is leftover from. He took, oh, he took his hand, and so it's Laura Knott.
Okay, Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for acknowledging me. I, I just want to point out that Mr. Smith was referring to a letter I had submitted the last Planning Board meeting. And he did not update what I was discussing for tonight's meeting. So I'm not sure that he was truly listening to what I was presenting tonight. Either way, though, I believe my arguments are still valid regarding what I presented tonight. And I would just recommend that the board reviews this in great detail to truly understand what is going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Pete Cameron?
Yes?
Have we stayed on one topic?
Mostly.
Okay. Should we discuss the, the other waiver request for the 962? Know if there's any questions about that one? That's the one dealing with the buffer strip being reduced to 50 feet? For Lot 5, I believe, if I'm not right?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to, to summarize our, our argument on, on that waiver. I defer to the board. Based on the amount of time we spent on, on this issue, that preliminary question that we hope that the, the board would take up tonight is whether, in the first instance, a waiver from 7.13 was required at all. If the answer to that question by the board is yes, then I would like to address the waiver criteria. And I would respectfully submit that thereafter we could discuss the vegetative buffer issue, although I'm happy to take that up now if you like.
No, that's fine, let's, let's do what you're suggesting, Justin. To look at, in the materials you had submitted, Issue 3, I think it is, formalized recess waiver request from Section 17.13 of the Regulations, Issue 3.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chair, that, that Issue 3 there is the actual waiver request. It's listed elsewhere, and I may not have stated it as clearly as I, as I could have. But based on the arguments that we've advanced tonight, on the arguments that we've advanced tonight, so I used to say, our position is that no waiver is required because we have a variance to use this yield plan in this case. So if the board agrees with us on that, I don't think a waiver from 7.13 is required. If the board doesn't agree with us on that, then I think we can move to the waiver requests respectfully.
Okay, so let's put on the table here a little discussion about how we feel, or are we ready to discuss the issue as to whether we will accept the waiver from the ZBA or not?
Accept the waiver from the ZBA? I'm not clear on that. I think what Mr. Parceau is requesting is that, well, the planning board, is the planning board determining that you need a waiver from 7.13 or you do not?
Yes.
Everyone, you know, is familiar with the legal opinion that was provided to the board about, I don't know, a month and a half ago or so, that addressed in part that issue.
Yes, yeah.
And made a recommendation for the board. And if you remember correctly, I did recommend that a waiver should be requested.
Pete Cameron?
I think we should proceed forward on the, on the Section 7.13, 7.13, as though the board had determined that a waiver is required. Okay?
All right.
I'd like to see that. I think the argument probably has been made somewhere in this pile of papers, and maybe even tonight. But let's go, let's assume, just for the sake of moving forward here, that a waiver is necessary. Does anybody feel the same about that?
I see heads nodding.
Is that going to sleep?
No, 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 no.
Jen Martel has her hand up.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Pete Cameron. I think that personally, I'd kind of like to just hear what the proposed waiver is and the justification for it, because I sort of, I feel like it's hard to say whether or not a waiver is required if we don't really know what the waiver, we haven't really heard what the waiver is being asked for yet.
Okay.
So I think it would be good to kind of proceed that way, and then we can determine it at that time.
Better said than a jan.
So... Is that consensus of that? Gwen, do you feel we need to hear the request? Can't hear you. Oh.
Sorry. Yes, I would agree with Jim. I would like to, one, I would like to go forward with this and pursue a discussion about a waiver and how we would weigh in on such a waiver.
All right, yeah. So let me ask, go ahead.
For some reason, my panelist list, when I click on the tab, it's blank now. All the names have gone. So I see that two people have their hand up. I don't know who it is, so...
I can tell you, one is Aaron Brown and one is Peter Steckler.
Okay, someone, thank you. Nancy, maybe you can keep track of that. I still can see the attendees, but for some reason, I can't see the panelists, so...
I will be happy to.
Thank you.
If that's all right with you.
Let's ask Aaron. Is he next in line here?
Aaron is next in line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Line. I don't think we can hear a waiver because we want to hear the argument for waiver. But I do think in this case, in my opinion, a waiver is required. And I do think we should vote on that as to whether or not we believe a waiver is required. If we're going to have the applicant present a waiver, I think we should vote on it and determine that it's necessary. This is very likely to go to court. We have two attorneys that have taken up the bulk of this meeting tonight, and we haven't even made a decision. So I don't think we can go on our opinions. I think we have to work on legal standings, and I think we need to be pretty appropriate with how we proceed.
Thank you.
Peter Steckler is next one.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just wondering, you know, we have, I guess I interpret as some clear language about variances in 7.13. I'm curious about how waivers relate to 7.13 and conventional subdivision regulations, but we're waiving, we're talking about waiving ourselves from what the yield plan must be in 7.13. So then, what guides us at that point around what is conventional if we've waived ourselves from it? I mean, this seems circular to me, so I'm struggling to see where we, you know, what comes first, what comes second, and where we end up with a waiver and how then we evaluate a yield plan if we've waived what we're supposed to be guided and evaluating your yield plan. Does that make any sense? I'm sorry. My mind's spinning right now, so...
It's very, it's...
I think I know what you're asking. The site plan and subdivision regulations are a compilation of provisions that all applicants need to meet. But then, there's always a safety valve, as required by state law, that ability to waive requirements in your regulations. In the ordinance, it's a variance. In your site and sub regs, it's a waiver. So you have to be able to waive any of your regulations. So waiving this one, I don't see as any different than saying your stormwater management, you know, you need to meet a water quality volume of one, you know. Then, well, you can argue that if they can't meet one, it's like, wow, you can't do anything because we can't meet our standard. So there always has to be the ability to waive. And if they do ask for a waiver, then it's incumbent upon them to meet the criteria, five criteria set forth in Section 13.7, that you need to meet in order to grant that waiver. So I really don't see any difference between waiving this provision or any of the provisions because they're all shall, must. I mean, if it's may, then it's probably, you know, gray, and you may or may not need a waiver. I mean, I guess that's a case-by-case situation. But everywhere, it says, you know, you need to meet 60% removal efficiency of phosphorus, and you cannot do that, and you can only meet 50%. You need a waiver. Is that, is that...
I mean, it helps, but I guess this specific waiver request has to do with the guiding principles for a yield plan, right? I mean, that it has to be, it shall comply with conventional subdivision regulations and shall not require a variance from existing zoning ordinance, blah, blah, blah. You know, those are some strong guiding principles that have to do with a lot of the design elements of this yield plan. So it seems a little bit different than just we're waiving the need for some stormwater target, or it's like, it seems much broader than that in this particular case. But I just wanted to raise that. I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, there are no additional hands up if Mr. Steckler is done.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing that we need to make a decision as to whether we would want a waiver or not. And maybe at this point, I should close the public session and bring it back to the board because we're trying to make a decision. Or where are we, Dave?
You could do that. I mean, I think, you know, the hour's getting late. Zoom meetings tend to be a little bit more fatigue than maybe an in-person, you know, throw that up there for the board to discuss how they're managing this at this point. But I, you know, I think the next, what I would recommend, the next thing is to decide if they need a waiver. Like Aaron said, you could vote on it. Someone could make a motion to, you know, either effect and vote on it. And if you determine that, then the next step would be to listen to the waiver arguments, you know, and keep the public hearing open. And Mr. Parceau would, you know, he reserved his right to do that. But then Tim Britton also earlier reserved his right to speak on those when and if they came. And then, and then if that happened, then you get to a point where the board feels that they have all the information that they need to go into deliberations, then you would close the public hearing and go into deliberations. I don't know if you'd make it to that point tonight, you know, but you could always, you know, when you get to deliberations, close the public hearing and table it. But I don't know how far you're willing to go. I guess I'll defer to the board on that. But I would suggest the next step is to vote on needing a waiver from 7.13.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion. At least we can get off the center point that we would, the board chooses to request a waiver.
Well, I...
Yes, Pete?
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I think we at least need to get that out and discuss it. If we vote it down, we vote it down. And I thought I heard Aaron say that he was in favor of looking at it. Aaron, did I misunderstand?
I second that motion, Pete.
I beg pardon?
I second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Get it out and vote on it.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
So the motion, just to be clear, is that a waiver from 7.13 is required?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. No questions on that? Then I'll call for a vote. Roll call vote. Gwen, I'm going to start with you, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Peter's hand's up. Peter Steckler's hand just came up.
Okay.
Sorry, I just want to clarify because the motion language provided by Dave was a bit more specific to not requiring a variance from existing zoning ordinances versus a waiver from 7.13. So I think that's partly what I was tripping myself up on because I hadn't looked at the waiver language. And it's, when it's very specific to the variance from existing zoning ordinances, that's much more palatable for me than a waiver of 7.13. And I think as motioned, we just said 7.13 and not that specific variance. So I'd like to suggest that we amend the motion to be more specific to the variance from existing zoning ordinances. Thanks.
Isn't the motion just saying that he needs a waiver? He can't go forward without...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. He needs a waiver. I think it's understood. I get your point, Pete. I understand it. I think you're moving forward that he needs the waiver as I specify in my memorandum, which is a little more specific. And I don't think you're just voting on it if he needs that waiver.
Yeah. Okay, so Gwen voted yea. Peter Steckler, how do you vote?
I think yea.
Pete Cameron?
This is my motion, yea.
All right. Jen Martel?
Yes.
Molly?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. So... And I guess we need to ask...
Line?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion, given the wordy nature of this upcoming deliberation, that you put a timeline on this meeting now?
Okay. 10 o'clock? Half an hour?
I'm in favor of 10. I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Then let's give it a whirl. We'll stop at 10 o'clock, and we're going to end up tabling it. So at any rate, we'll do that at that time. So... Attorney Parceau, would you proceed with your waiver request? It's what we're looking for, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And for the board's orientation, this is Issue 3 in our June 3 filing. So the first point, which I won't belabor at all, is the point we've already made. So if this waiver denied, our position is that it obviates everything that came before, obviates Doug's decisions, the variance. It obviates the appeal periods which have told and were not appealed, and it violates, you know, the Grissette's constitutional rights. So we've made that argument. It's laid out in our argument. We've discussed it tonight. So it's another academic-type analysis. The waiver that we're requesting relief from is a waiver from that portion of Section 7.13 of the subdivision site review regulations that says a yield plan shall not require a variance. So the factual predicate to this is that the zoning board of adjustment looked at this proposal and granted relief for us to use this yield plan in this case. The waiver criteria in 13.7, not coincidentally, align themselves very significantly with the statutory variance criteria listed in RSA 67433. So a lot of what the analysis that we've provided in our writing and what I'll summarize tonight relies on that. Because as I've said before, planning board regulations promulgated by the planning board are less a form of authority than variance, statutory variance relief provided by the zoning board of adjustment. And there's lots of case law about what the statutory variance criteria mean. And as I'll go through, they line up significantly with the town's regulation regarding waivers in 13.7. So to summarize, the variance criteria are that in order for the zoning board of adjustment to grant a variance, it can't be contrary to the public interest. It has to be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. It has to accomplish substantial justice. It can't prejudice surrounding property values. And the board has to find that strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would constitute an unnecessary hardship. And that's a real tough burden to make because, as I've noted already, variance relief is designed as a constitutional protection, a safety valve, to prevent what would otherwise be a taking from the town. So you've really got to prove special circumstances on your property. You've really got to prove why it doesn't make sense to apply this zoning ordinance to this property. And as you know, we've got a very broad zoning variance from the entirety of Article 7 and the dimensional requirements in Section 4.3. So the fact that the ZBA granted a variance alone is enough, from our perspective, to be the basis for an approval and a waiver in this case. But turning to the actual criteria, the first is that granting the waiver will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property. That criteria is a combination of the first, second, and fourth prongs of the variance criteria, whether the variance will be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, whether it will violate the public interest, whether it will diminish surrounding property values. It's literally the same language. The Supreme Court has held that in the context of whether or not a variance will alter, excuse me, will be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance or violate public interest, the Supreme Court has said there's two tests that you look at. The first is whether or not the proposal will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and the second is whether it will threaten the public health or safety, just like this waiver regulation says. The answer to that is no. First, the subdivision regulations require on parcels larger than 20 acres that they be developed for open space, certainly at 54 acres plus. Certainly at fifty four acres plus, that is satisfied in this case. Further open space development, as I've said, specifically contemplates use of contiguous parcels. The the proposal here certainly preserves the character of the neighborhood through similar uses. And I point to the white appraisal that we provided, but which is referenced throughout our variance application, which again was part of our submittal on June third. The proposal contemplates the 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 uh, plan to compo, to provide thirty two acres of property, the entirety of the Mendez Trust property to the town, which was received very well by the planning board at the designer view and by the conservation commission. There'll be another ten acres of preservation for the condo association. And certainly, the plan will comply with the master plan vision, particularly the specific uh, portions that we've previously referenced that deal with the the idea that the town has identified this property as a transitional area between the more dense downtown areas and the more rural areas further along. Certainly, the waiver here to to allow a yield plan, which by definition could be developed tomorrow, will not be injurious to other properties. We have the express support for the yield plan from the closest abutters, those being the two on Grayberg Circle and the Flaherty's. And we have the white appraisal, which has not been rebutted at all by anyone throughout this process, which squarely finds that the proposed open space development is consistent with other types of developments off of existing subdivisions in the town of Exeter and consistently found that there would be no diminishment of surrounding property. There is no other expert evidence in this case that would suggest otherwise. I would submit that the first criteria on these grounds and those articulated in our filings has been satisfied. The second waiver criteria under thirteen point seven is that the conditions upon which the request for waivers based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable generally to other property. This waiver criteria i- is really the hardship analysis of a variance. The hardship prong of a variance criteria requires you to show why the special conditions of your property that make it different from other properties in area, in the area, make application of the zoning ordinance to your property unreasonable to make it not make sense. And certainly, these properties are totally unique. They're among the largest properties in the area, the largest undevelopable uh, portions of of property in the town of Exeter. They're encumbered, as we've laid out through the filings and through the wetland reports, by significant wetlands and small pockets of uplands. They're primarily undevelopable, save for those small areas of uplands. The Mendez Trust property is in the NP, which the the whole point of the NP district is to provide easy public access and mixed and commercial uses along thoroughfares, but which has no frontage at all. The Mendez Trust property has no frontage. It is a landlocked parcel that is accessed only via a right of way through the Brickyard condominium. So you've got a property that's landlocked, it's burdened by wetlands, it's among the largest in the area, there is no frontage and therefore no accessibility. Certainly, those are considerations, those are conditions that the, upon which are unique to these properties that make this waiver request appropriate. And on top of all of that, there are obviously the equitable considerations in this context to include the fact that there's already been a waiver, that uh, already been a variance applied, and that the underlying subdivision depicting eighteen lots, some of which have portions within the NP, already have a special exception to depict that R one development in the NP and could be developed tomorrow. The third waiver criteria is that because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. So reading the seven point one three variance, uh, the seven point one three regulation to mean that a yield plan which could be developed tomorrow, but which benefited from a a variance to allow quote unquote, the transfer of density from the NP would obviously detriment the owner here. The owner has relied on the representations of the to, the town code enforcement officer, has obtained relief, did not have to write, have to fight further because none of the relief that was granted was uh, was appealed. And so the, any interpretation that would somehow obviate that whole process would obviate the variance itself, which is the 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 most primal form of relief a property owner can get to prevent a taking from the town. It would waste, obviously, the effort and time to date. And it and it elevates the relief obtained by the variance, excuse me, it elevates the relief that could be given by a waiver above the constitutional relief provided by the variance, which again is inconsistent with New Hampshire uh, jurisprudence. And again, this third criteria is the is the hardship criteria. These properties are large. There are significant wetlands. They are, the Mendez Trust property is landlocked. These are totally unique properties to the area. And as we, as we proved unanimously with the unanimous support of the ZBA, this would be a hardship if the if the underlying variance, uh, underlying zoning ordinance was strictly interpreted, just like it would be a hardship if the underlying subdivision regulation was strictly interpreted to mean, no matter what relief you get, you cannot have a yield plan that obtained variance relief. The fourth criteria is that granting the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Again, that's the identical language from the first and second prong of the variance criteria, which require you to show that the variance won't violate the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and won't be contrary to the public interest. The express language of seven point one three applies to yield plans that would require variance relief from the ZBA, which has not yet been obtained. We've discussed that tonight. Moreover, the second prongs of the variance criteria, whether it would violate the spirit and the intent or the public interest, are analyzed at nauseam here. This proposal does not violate the essential character of the neighborhood, does not cause a public threat. It's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, it's consistent with other development in town. It's going to result in forty two acres of land conveyed to the town and or the condominium so, uh, development. Um, and it has the full support of the, of butters that are actually impacted. Finally, the fifth and final waiver criteria is that the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or the master plan. Well, that first portion, that it won't vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, is an important one to consider. When you have a proposal that varies from the the zoning provision, you get variance relief. That is what happened in this case. In an abundance of caution, in a totally legally nuanced situation, we obtained unanimous variance relief to use this yield plan in this case. So I would submit respectfully that this this proposal, which has the unanimous consent and approval of a variance from the ZBA, is not inconsistent with the zoning ordinance. Certainly, it's not inconsistent with the master plan. The proposed open space development is precisely the type of transitional development that was envisioned for this parcel through the master plan itself. Beyond this, there are big lots in this, in this yield plan, and we have a special exception for the residential use in the NP. We satisfy all other zoning requirements. It's been verified by the town and the town engineer. And certainly, uh, this criteria is satisfied as well. So that is the analysis in addition to what we provided on paper uh, for the the requested waiver from section seven point one three, and it is all rooted in the fact that we cannot elevate a subdivision or site review regulation above variance relief that was never appealed. And we otherwise meet all of the criteria which align perfectly with the with the variance criteria in the statute, which was unanimously approved by the ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the part of the board?
Mr. Chair, there is, um, Attorney Britton has his hand up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Peter also, I'm sorry, Attorney Britton, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Uh, Mr. Chair, Peter Steckler on our panelist has his hand up also.
All right, let's hear from Peter first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and thanks for bearing with me as I ask a lot of questions, some of them not so good probably, but um, I'm think, I'm looking at um the letter C and particularly, um, and I'm wondering if Attorney Passay can shed some light on this one because as my understanding, the request for this waiver has more to do with zoning and the zoning districts than physical surrounding shape or topography. So I I'm wondering if I'm misinterpreting that. Um, uh, because it seems more like a zoning line issue and how lots fall within zoning districts um, than an issue with physical surrounding shape or topography. And I'm, I'm trying to be as literal as possible here so, so I can um, understand what we're dealing with, but I'm curious if uh, that's my question.
Okay. Justin?
Uh, I appreciate the question, though. I I'm gonna be honest, I'm not really sure, um, I'm not really sure I understand it. The you're talking about the third prong, I believe, which says that because of the particular physical surrounding shape or or topography, topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the ownership, owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. So I, I keep going back to the zoning ordinance, which states what the point of a yield plan is, and it's to depict reasonably achievable conventional subdivision. Our yield plan depicts a subdivision which basically has already been permitted. We got the special exception required for the NP district to permit R one residential use in the NP. We comply with all other zoning ordinances, as verified by the town planner and the town engineer. We otherwise comply with all of the subdivision regulations and site review regulations, save for the Lot five issue. This is a weird application in this case because the real waiver we're talking about is a waiver from this, this one clause in a larger provision that says a variance shall not be required. Our position all along is that a variance is not required because a variance is already in hand. The variance that we got, as you saw in the materials, analyzed at length why it was appropriate to use the Mendez Trust property in this proposal pursuant to the larger open space divine. That's the whole point of the whole variance analysis. And that process obtained the result that I've discussed tonight. And this specific criteria is very similar to the hardship criteria in the variance uh, uh, context, which requires an owner to say, look, this is my property, it's really unique. You shouldn't oppose, you should not put the zoning ordinance on me in this context because it doesn't make sense under the facts of my property. And that's the analysis that was undertaken at the ZBA, and the ZBA unanimously agreed. They said, look at that property. It is landlocked. There's no access to it. It's zoned in a funky way. It makes perfect sense to use the Mendez Trust property pursuant to a larger open space development. And that was the proposal. So the third criteria requires us to review the topographical and the physical characteristic of the property itself. But I get that it's academic because we're talking about this small clause in seven point one three, and I I don't know how to distill it anymore than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Britton has his hand up.
Okay, Tim, you were next. So let's, let's uh, start with what's already been determined this evening. And what the board has determined by requiring the applicant to seek a waiver of section seven point one three of the subdivision regulations is that that regulation says exactly what I've told you that it says, that you cannot have a yield plan that requires a variance. So now you need to look at, wha- what is the waiver that's being required? It seems to me, based upon the letter that Mr. Passay provided to the board, that he's seeking a waiver of seven point one three in its entirety. Now, I don't know how you can waive the requirement for a yield plan in its entirety because the requirement for a yield plan derives from the zoning ordinance, not the subdivision regulations. Seven point seven point one of the ordinance specifically says that the applicant needs to provide a yield plan that's consistent with the requirements of the ordinance and the requirements of the subdivision and site plan review regulations of the town. It says, the dwelling unit density shall be no greater than that allowed by the yield plan unless a density bonus can be applied. By waiting seven point one three, they're asking you to throw out the only provision in the site plan review and subdivision regulations governing a yield plan, and therefore the absence of a yield plan is contrary to the zoning ordinance, just to start with. The other thing that we have to keep in mind, and Justin and I disagree on this point, there's no doubt about it. He keeps saying that the Mendez Trust property is part of this project. Well, it's part of this project in a very ethereal sense because the only site to be developed is Lot ninety six fifteen. And the only variance granted is to be able to transfer density at an R one level from the NP parcel to the R one parcel. The problem is that an NP parcel cannot be part of an open space development pursuant to the terms of section seven point five point three of the ordinance. It can't be. So we keep going back to the fact that this trust property is supposed to be part of this project, and by ordinance, it cannot be part of this project without a variance. And there has been no specific variance granted with respect to that section of the ordinance. I would submit to you that um, some interpretation of the variance request that the entirety of the open space development, um, a variance has been granted to all of the terms of section seven, that's ludicrous. We all know that a variance request has to be very specific to a certain provision of the ordinance. It can't be to an entire article of the order of the ordinance as suggested by Attorney Passay. So if you look critically at what is being requested, they're requesting not to have to use a a yield plan at all. Now, I think Justin's gonna say, well, no, 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 we're only, we're asking um, that we can use a yield plan that does and can require a variance. And now that means you're going to look at very specific language, and you need to look very specifically at section thirteen point seven and the criteria there. The applicant has the burden to prove all of the factors that are set forth in section thirteen point seven. But there are a couple of aspects of those requirements that the board really needs to focus on. There are no conditions that are unique to this property. This property can be developed as an open space development. It just can't be developed at the density that the applicant seeks for economic reasons. So th- th- this fallacy that it can't be used in the manner intended and permitted by the ordinance is just not true. There are no physical conditions of these open space lots that impose any hardship on the applicant. They can develop an open space lot based upon twenty six point three acres of Lot ninety six fifteen and perhaps, and perhaps the Brickyard parcel as well. Um, I disagree with that, but I I reserve the right to argue that further another time when I've had a chance to uh, look at that. And I'm getting a message that my internet connection is unstable, so hopefully you're not gonna lose me. But if you do, I have laid out all of these criteria of why the waiver request must be denied in my letter, and I'll just incorporate that by reference because um, there there is a chance that A, I could lose connectivity and B, we're gonna be bumping up against ten o'clock very time, very, very soon. very time, very, very soon. The only reasons that this proposed yield plan is impossible arise from Section 7.5.3 of the ordinance prohibiting open space development in the NP District, and the fact that the town of Exeter, through legislative action, has not adopted transfer of density and development rights as an innovative land use control. In short, they don't arise from, the defects in the yield plan don't arise from the condition of the land, but rather they arise as a matter of law. As I said, they could, the Grissette's could produce a yield plan that complies with conventional subdivision regulations, given the natural capacity of this land. Their inability to achieve their desired density, however, is not a justification for waiving the requirements of Section 7.13. And I would submit to you, and perhaps this is the most important point, that if a waiver were granted, it would be directly contrary to the spirit and intent of Section 7.13. It would be directly contrary to the provisions of the zoning ordinance. 7.71 of the ordinance, in conjunction with Section 7.13 of the Site Plan Review Regulations, are designed to limit open space developments to the natural capacity of the land being developed, i.e. the natural capacity of Lot 9615. That is the only property that is eligible to be developed. The Mendez property may not be used for an open space development, as I've already said. I would submit to you that waiving the no variance yield plan requirement would vary, and in fact, be directly contrary to Section 7.71 of the ordinance, which provides an independent requirement for a yield plan that depicts a conventional subdivision that complies with the ordinance. So for all of those reasons, I would respectfully request that the board deny the requested waiver from Section 7.13 of the Site Plan Review Regulations.
Thank you.
May I, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I think we've thrown around 7.13, and the reason being, and then maybe Mr. Passay's, you know, written might allude to 7.13, but as I stated in my memo, in the motion provided, I believe all that the board should be considering a waiver from is a sentence of 7.13, but you can't, there isn't, each sentence isn't labeled 7.13A, 7.13B, so we're just kind of using it as 7.13, but I'll read my waiver motion would be, a waiver from the requirement to provide a yield plan that shall not require a variance from existing zoning ordinances. That's the narrow part of 7.13 waiver that you're considering, that I articulated in the memo, and it's not a blanket waiver for 7.13.
Well, we got about three minutes. Do you want to try to, a motion on this, or does somebody grab the table and?
May I suggest, I think a good place to go right now would be to, for the board to determine if they have enough in the record and in public comment to deliberate the waivers and the yield plan, so they could, you could close the public hearing, that would, you know, so no more public input from the applicant, from anyone, and then you could go, and then you could table it till the next meeting and deliberate these items.
Yes, okay.
So we don't get, you know, we don't need to keep getting, you know, like if you have enough information to make an informed decision, then I would suggest, that's if, you know, the board decides that, if you have that information to deliberate and make an informed decision on these questions, then I would suggest closing the public hearing and then tabling it, because you're up against the 10 o'clock, to continue to a future meeting to deliberate those questions.
Okay. Let's do that. The question is, do we, do we have enough information to make our decisions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Dave, can you see that Jennifer has her hand up?
No, all I can see is a panelist has her hand, I don't see the list of panelists.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Chair, Jennifer Martel has her hand up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to request one thing in the site plan that I think would be helpful for me when reviewing the yield plan, when we get to that point, or if we get to that point, would be to see potential driveway layouts. I know at the last meeting, the driveways were described, and I noticed a few of them were added, but especially those ones that like have frontage on one road, but the actual parcels are set way back, it would just be nice to kind of see how the engineer is thinking of that those driveways would be laid out from my own visualization in reviewing the yield plan. So that's one piece of information I would like to request.
All the driveways are shown on the plan dated February 3, 2020. Is that what you're looking, I mean, you're not looking for a physical like road profile, are you?
No, I'm not looking for a road profile, I'm looking for...
They are shown. Every lot has a driveway shown to the building envelope.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I was looking at six and seven, and they were getting lost in the contour lines.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I withdraw my request, sorry.
Ask Gwen, she'll show you how to color the driveways. So, is there a consensus, that we have, we've got enough information? Aaron, do you have a feeling on this?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but Peter Steckler has just raised his hand.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to weigh in that I think that I have what I need to make a determination on this, or at least deliberate further. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Pete, your voice faded. Could you repeat what you said? Pete Cameron.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. I just wanted to say that I think I have the information that I need to make a vote and deliberate, or I should say deliberate.
Thank you.
Out of a public session.
Thank you.
How about you, Pete?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm going to want to look at the transcript of this hearing.
Would you have that?
No, I don't have it yet.
Yeah, well, okay.
The minutes, you mean?
The minutes, yes, I mean the minutes.
All right. We won't do a transcript.
Yeah, I know, I should not have said transcript.
Right, yeah.
Because they're going to be very important to line up the two positions and put whatever it is, 13 points in the middle.
You can also, in the, because the minutes are, you know, generally a brief discussion, they don't, they're not a verbatim record, so, you know, you can always watch the planning board available on our website through, you know, Exeter TV, Channel 21, Demand, and so forth.
That may be where I have to go.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's no new information, that's...
Yes, understood.
All right.
I think I'm ready. Aaron, did you?
I, I think Dave's advice is spot on, I think we should close the public session on this matter, on this part.
Okay.
And then I think we should continue the hearing, because I think it's getting pretty late, and I think we should all process both sides of the argument, as Pete Cameron just spoke to.
Yeah.
And then readdress it and deliberate at our next meeting.
Okay, so, that's three, four of us. I'll close the public meeting, a public portion of this meeting at this time, and I'd entertain a motion to table. When would we be meeting again?
Well, I mean, there is a, there's a pretty big project on June 25, and you've been consistent, you've decided to come back in all of this, is to keep a month-to-month separate agendas, so you don't cross and table anything for two weeks, and because we have, we have two applications that have taken up the June agendas, well, the end of May and the June agendas, and now July, we do have seven more applications waiting after these go through, so.
Oh.
If you're still going on that, it would be by 9.
July 9, table tonight, July 9 at 7:00 PM.
Correct.
Maybe we'll all be together.
Well, we might. Would somebody like to make that motion, please?
I think Attorney Passay put his hand up, maybe.
Okay.
A procedural?
No, no, I rescind my hand up, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm seeing no hands up right now.
Well, it was a physical hand.
It was a finger, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
It'll be July 9 at 7:00 PM.
July 9, table to, to, July 9, or to continue, on July 9 at 7:00 PM.
Don't move.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, thank you. Okay, we got to do a hand count, please. Gwen?
Aye, sorry.
Peter Steckler?
Aye.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
Nancy, and, excuse me, Jennifer Martel?
Yes.
And Molly Allen, and I also agree, so that has been taken care of, and that's the decision. Okay. I would say the hour being what it is, we need to adjourn, and thank everybody for their time and their input.
Thank you.
And have a nice weekend.
Motion to adjourn.
And you.
Motion to adjourn, okay.
Stay well.
Where's your gavel, Lang? Where's your gavel?
Right here, I don't want to smash my...
All right.
A motion was, a motion was made, I guess, in section...
Move to adjourn, Lang is a dictator now.
I'm seven minutes late.